...Ranchavas County Board of Commissioners for Wednesday, September 18th, 2019. It's 8:00 AM. I'll start with our opening ceremonies. Commissioner Hundley has our invocation.
I would first like to say thanks for allowing us to sit here and do the county's business, and I hope that we all do it in the most diligent and careful manner possible. Thank you all for being here. Thanks to the administration, and let's get at it.
All right. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance.) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
LaPointe?
Here.
Klaus?
Here.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Jewett?
Here.
Hundley?
Here.
Koffea?
Hencho?
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. Next is the approval of the minutes for September 4th, 2019, regular meeting. Page three in your packet. Any corrections or motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Support.
Moved by Klaus, supported by Jewett. On any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. We are at first public comment. I'll just, before she reads the rules, note that if anyone wishes something removed from the consent agenda later in the meeting, this is your opportunity to speak on that and let us know that you plan to do so. Go ahead.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following Board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, allow an additional opportunity or time to speak if determined germane and necessary to the discussion. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the Board. Prior to the first public comment, the chairperson will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized, and shall not address the Board until called upon by the chairperson. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Okay, who do you want to like to speak this morning? Good morning.
Bruce Moore, 363 Summer Leaf Drive, Traverse City. I'm in East Bay Township in Commissioner LaPointe's district. In reviewing the Ethics Policy and the Ad-Hoc Committee's meeting last Wednesday, I encourage you to discuss and adopt several different provisions that are not included in the policy that the Ethics Ad-Hoc Committee has chosen to recommend. First, the policy that the committee has recommended does not include an investigative procedure that is specific to the Board of Commissioners. If there's a problem with a Commissioner requiring employees that you can hire and fire to investigate that is not an appropriate way to handle that type of issue. Second, there should be enforcement provisions that are specific to Commissioners. The existing policy does not include any provision specific to Commissioners. By law, there are not necessarily very many things that you can do, but there should be an explicit procedure. Third, there should be a prohibition from using public office to obtain confidential information of a competitor. That's a provision that I cannot find in any of the items on the list. The fourth item, at the May 29th Ad-Hoc Committee meeting, there was a proposal to include an annual public disclosure of assets in the county. This is not a disclosure of all assets that someone holds, but only those assets that are real estate and businesses that are in the county and which could pose a potential conflict of interest. There's a variety of different language that could be used for that, but I encourage you to use, to do that in whatever policy you adopt. The purpose of the policy is to ultimately avoid questionable votes and to avoid expensive litigation. And the policy that the Ad-Hoc Committee has proposed, which is really to revert to the personnel policy, is insufficient for that goal. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Good morning, Dave.
Morning, Rob. David Petro, 9988 Riley Road, Interlaken. I don't know if there's a ethics thing going on now or not, according to what I've heard. It's nothing. Anyway, this is a summary statement. I read a proposed resolution last, last two weeks ago about Grand Traverse County Resolution in support of Michigan Legislature Resolution calling for the resignation of Representative Larry Enman, and it may have been too complicated. So I was going to summarize it here. Whereas United States citizens and Grand Traverse County citizens have historically expressed legitimate revulsion about foreign involvement in our governmental election process, and we have expressed concern about dark money being expended by political organizations, specifically from outside our political district, and we recognize that democratic government is dependent upon citizen trust and honest decision-making, free of conflicting interests or nefarious expenditures intended to purchase any representative's votes to oppose the democratic rights of citizens, and whereas we, the people of this county and citizens of all democracies, expect and deserve their government representatives to be intelligent, informed, and rational-thinking adults when making decisions that concern government business, and also note that Mr. Larry Enman was a longtime member of this Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners prior to becoming the 104th District Representative, and whereas the citizens and Board of Commissioners of Grand Traverse County are rightfully embarrassed by the continued tenure of Larry Enman as representative of the 104th District, we therefore beseech this Board to resolve that the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners shall hereby join with the Michigan House of Representatives in support of their 98 to 8 vote requesting Representative Larry Enman resign from his elected position to help dispel any dispersions about the integrity of politicians coming from this county. I read the proposed resolution and submitted a copy to this Board for consideration approval two weeks ago, but it seems the proposed resolution was either too wordy, or this Board is worried about throwing ethics stones inside this county commission glass house. Given the decision last week to cancel the Ad-Hoc Ethics Policy Committee, we may presume Larry Enman was not the only or the last of Grand Traverse County Commissioners who should be worried about throwing stones in this glass house. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
And another copy of the resolution I submitted.
All right. Anybody else this morning? Good morning, Ted.
Good morning, Ted Iorio, Elmwood. The current code, resolution, excuse me, the current Code of Ethics, number, Regulation 22, provides, and I want to quote it, "Provides an employee or elected or appointed official may express his or her personal views with respect to personal issues. However, he shall not, or she shall not, by use of his or her position or otherwise, represent those personal opinions as those of the county." Pretty clear rule. And the reason I, we raise it is because the passage of line five is a violation of Rule 22. Not to mention common sense. The resolution addresses an issue and stamps the personal opinion of four of the Board, of four of the Commissioners. It's not anchored to any county business whatsoever, and four BOC members simply adopted their personal opinion and thereby labeled the resolution as a Grand Traverse Seal of Approval. We haven't approved it. The residents haven't approved it. Four have here, and it doesn't deal with county business. The purpose of the rule is simple. It's meant to deny and prevent divisiveness over issues that are outside the company's sphere of influence. It certainly hasn't done that here. It's a waste of county time. Three hours of dialogue at one of our Board meetings regarding line five. We had department heads waiting here to get up to talk that had to wait to hear about non-county business. Who drafted the resolution? I know one of the councilmen asked, or Commissioners asked, who drafted it? Enbridge? Did the administration? In either case, it's a waste of time for the administration, and it's clearly wrong for Enbridge to have his hand in on this. It opens Pandora's Box. We got an example of that, rightly or wrongly, on the Enman resolution. You're going to see more resolutions to be presented to the commission that are outside the county so we can get the opinion of four Board of Commissioners? That's not the way the government should run. And then you add to it the lack of a process for the resolution. It was offensive to the public, the way it was handled. No public input, no fact-finding before the resolution was generated. And then you pull in Beta, which doesn't want, wasn't, isn't involved with this, and says, "The Commissioners should do their business." They didn't endorse it. Feral Gas, which provides the propane, says if line five goes down...
Thanks, Ted.
Can I have an extra minute? It'll take me a second. Which is an important issue. You have the discretion...
Everyone gets the same time.
Pardon?
Everybody gets the same time. Thank you.
Well, I would only add, I can't help you, to throw me in jail.
You're out of time.
Well, if you're...
You're out of time.
You didn't even show, you didn't show bad judgment.
You're wasting our time now, Ted. Everyone gets the same amount of time. Thank you. Morning, Ann.
Morning. Ann Rogers, 1236 Peninsula Drive. Those of us that were in the trenches, working to protect our fresh water for over as long as I can remember, were totally appalled last week by your approval of a Canadian company using our water to transport oil to another Canadian operation where it could destroy so much of what we have here in Michigan, including our economics. This is an affront to protection of the precious water that all of us need, 20% of the world's If you're not paying attention to climate change, it's happening whether you are paying attention or not, and I would suggest you tune in because it is affecting all of us, and it's affecting our water. It's affecting our soils. It's affecting our forests. It's affecting our public health. The climate is changing very rapidly. Predictions coming out now say maybe 12 to 15 years. That's not very long. If you have children and grandchildren, they're going to have to cope with some problems that we can't even imagine. The students get it. Students around the world are rallying to get their elders to pay attention, and there is a worldwide rally on Friday called a climate strike where students, union workers that are supporting them, elders that are supporting them, groups that are supporting them, supporters are going out and talking about climate change. We will have one here, and I invite all of you to be there. It's at 1:00 at the open space, and if you're not there, at least tune in to what is going on with the climate crisis. This is the kind of stuff we should be dealing with. We should be planning for how we're going to be dealing with what's coming ahead. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Anybody else this morning? Good morning, Gretchen.
Good morning. Gretchen Iorio, 520 North Elmwood, Traverse City. The line five tunnel resolution passed by a majority of this Board is an example of a lack of common sense we have seen exhibited by a majority of this Board. In addition to the tunnel resolution, the 8:00 meeting time, the no vote on a grant for needle exchange, the usurpation of the agenda by the chairman, the unpopular invocation policy, and the lack of agreement on a comprehensive ethics policy all point to a commission run amok. The example of the line five tunnel resolution is troubling on a number of fronts, and one of those is your lack of attention to Enbridge's poor safety record. Research shows that line five pipeline has spilled 33 times, and at least 1.1 million gallons of hazardous waste has spilled along its length since 1968. The University of Michigan scientists modeled the currents in the Straits of Mackinac and called it the worst possible place for an oil spill in the Great Lakes. Data has revealed that sections of line five in the Straits are cracked and dented, and a segment of, on land near the Straits has lost 26% of its original wall thickness. Data also shows that if an oil spill occurs in the Straits, only 30% of that oil is likely to be recovered. Further, Enbridge has reported that from 2002 through 2018, 307 hazardous liquid incidents to federal regulators. That is one incident every 20 days on average. These spills released a total of 2.8 million gallons of hazardous liquids. Thirty Enbridge incidents were reported that contaminated water resources, including 17 which contaminated groundwater. Did you not know that of the July 20th Enbridge Line 6B catastrophic rupture in the Kalamazoo River, 39 miles of that river, a nearby lake, a pond, and a dam were contaminated? That rupture was the worst inland spill in U.S. history. Enbridge's safety record is not a good one. Please stop buying into Enbridge's propaganda. Focus on the county business and begin to restore the public's faith in local government by taking the step of rescinding the line five tunnel resolution. Thank you.
Thanks, Gretchen. Okay, anybody else this morning? Good morning.
Good morning. Dave Nichols, 1044 Tart Trail Lane, Traverse City. At the August 21st BOC Commissioner, at the August 1st Board of Commissioners meeting, Commissioner Wheelock suggested that he would support any item being on a proposed agenda if it was requested by any of the Commissioners. He explained that each Commissioner needs to be able to represent the interest of the people in his own district. He also pointed out that his view is in contrast with the current procedure, where the Chair decides the proposed agenda without consulting the other members of the Board. The other Commissioners either need the Chair's approval or a majority vote to add or remove an agenda item. I agree with Commissioner Wheelock's view. However, he overlooks the fact that the Chair brought the items forward because the Chair alone decided the resolutions were worthy to consider. The Chair chose debating politically controversial resolutions, which are to be, to be decided at the state and national level, and that this was more important than focusing on matters of county government for which the Board has authority and responsibility. Commissioner Wheelock should also take the inherent merit of the agenda item into account when offered the opportunity. And I just also want to address one point related to facts about removing line five from the Straits. A study referenced in Crane's Detroit Business by London Economics International reported that the cost increase to UP residential propane users would be about 5 cents a gallon if the, if the line were removed. The increase is small compared to the average price of propane over recent years of about $2 a gallon. From a different report funded by Enbridge, the price increase to users in the lower peninsula would be at most 6 cents per gallon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this morning?
Morning. Hello. My name is Alan McCullough. I live at 20359 Douglas Road, Interlaken. I'm asking the Grand Traverse Board of Commissioners to reconsider its line five tunnel resolution, particularly the four Commissioners who voted in favor of the revolution, of the resolution. A frequent argument is that the merits of the line five tunnel is not within the Board's area of responsibility or expertise. Those Commissioners who felt strongly enough about the topic could have expressed their point of view as private citizens and not as representatives of Grand Traverse County. It is well-known that Enbridge has been encouraging Michigan County Commissioners to issue such resolutions. I wonder if county Commissioners would be so inclined to carry water for Enbridge if that company hadn't put words in their mouths and schemes in their brains. There's more of corporate capitalism and bottom line in these resolutions than anything else. There's been much said about the well-paying job that could come if the line five tunnel is constructed, but employment opportunities may not be all that beneficial in the long run. The Mining Journal of Marquette printed a letter to the editor cautioning about the impact of tunnel construction on UP communities. As for the jobs, the most highly skilled, well-paid ones will go to professionals, engineers, scientists, managers, accountants, support personnel, who often work off-site and spend their money elsewhere. Construction workers will be well-paid, but outside competition for those jobs will be strong, and the temporary workforce influx will stress small rural infrastructure and services. When jobs are complete, most workers often do not stay but go on to other jobs outside that area. What's frequently left behind is bloated infrastructure underfunded by a diminished tax base. The GT Commissioners who voted for the resolution may have done so with genuine convictions. Nevertheless, having done so in the face of considerable public opposition, they must not be surprised or hurt or feel misunderstood when the public response is one of anger, bitterness, and mistrust. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Good morning, Sylvia.
Good morning. My name is Sylvia McCullough. I'm at 20359 Douglas Road, Interlaken. I have come to understand, in light of a recent investigation by the Michigan Campaign Finance Network, that Enbridge, the company that owns the aging line five and oil and gas pipelines that run under the Straits of Mackinac, has been actively purchasing support for the line five tunnel to the tune of $63,000 in paid sponsorships and ads with the Michigan Association of Counties, and 105,728 at the state level in Michigan, purchasing full-page ads in news media outlets, who in exchange for Enbridge's money, repeat Enbridge's messages, often multiple times a day. On the local level here in Grand Traverse County, it appears that according to emails obtained through the Freedom of Information Act, certain Grand Traverse County Commissioners had been discussing the resolution for weeks before the vote. That was taken by four of them on August 21st, in spite of 53 members of the community speaking against the resolution. These backdoor discussions, if proven, could clearly constitute a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Gentlemen, you've made a big mistake. The people of Grand Traverse County do not support you. You're in ethical deep waters here, and I sincerely, for your own sakes, recommend that you rescind that resolution. It was a bad choice.
Anyone else this morning? Okay, none. We'll move on with our agenda. Next is the approval of the agenda. I will note, I did have one request from a Commissioner. Commissioner Koffea wanted to have the Sheriff talk to us about the jail. The Sheriff said that he'd be willing to do that on our next meeting, but he couldn't get the personnel he wanted here at this meeting. So I just, we just moved that to our next meeting instead of this meeting. The Sheriff explained that to Commissioner Koffea. Thank you. I also want to say on the agenda, because this has been mentioned, I have not restricted or left off any Commissioner's request to be on the agenda. This is an example of just putting it back because we couldn't compel the Sheriff to be here today to talk about that particular topic. So he's willing to come and talk to us at the next meeting. That said, notes, additions, rules, or agenda issues. Commissioner LaPointe.
Under new business, I'd like to add, number B, I'd like an update from, and I spoke to Dean Vought about this, to give us an update on the budget and where he stands in terms of that process, as there are four of us who have never been, four of us who have never been through this process, and just like to get an update on that.
Okay. Commissioner Koffea?
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. Are we, are Board rules require that we submit agenda items for consideration by yourself as the Chair for the proposed agenda prior to the 10-day window for each meeting? Is that still in effect?
I don't have the rules in front of me, but I would assume we would follow what the rules say.
Okay, just, I, my intention has been to ask that the discussions and decisions of the Ethics Ad-Hoc Committee be put on the next agenda, but our Ethics Ad-Hoc meeting met after that 10-day window was already closed, and so my intention is to bring that back at the, the first meeting in October with the appropriate paperwork involved. There's quite a bit that I would like to bring forward, and I waited because we were inside the 10-day window, so I just want to make that statement. I don't know when it was requested by others, but it needs to come back, and it needs to come back with the appropriate materials so that we have the information in front of us to discuss it, just to go on record to that point.
How would the Board like to handle, is that...
I would love for us to actually just hold it till the first meeting in October so that the full Board has all of the information in front of us. There's nothing in our packet about it today. And I would have asked for it if I knew that I could get it on the agenda for this meeting.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Jewett did verbally ask me last, week before last, I think it was...
Before the Ethics Ad-Hoc or after?
He asked before. He had wanted to talk about it at this meeting.
Okay, well, then it'll just be unfinished business again next, at the next meeting because we don't have any of the materials in front of us to discuss.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what I'll take is motions to amend the proposed agenda, if you'd like to do it that way, and we can vote on what we want. I assume Commissioner LaPointe's is by consensus, there's no objection to putting that B1 Budget Process, or, sorry, 11B Budget Process. If there's no objection to that, we'll add that to the proposed agenda. But if you want to take a vote on whether or not we discuss that today, we can, you can make a motion to amend the proposed agenda?
Well, I would ask my, I guess, my colleague if he would be willing to just put it on the agenda for the October 3rd meeting so that we can have everything in front of us and have a full discussion.
Well, I don't think what I'm going to say is really going to have, have an effect. I mean, if we decide that we need to discuss it again, we can continue it for next meeting, but I, I think it's important that we leave it on there.
Well, I'm not going to vote to not talk about Ethics at our meeting. I just want to be clear that I think there's a fuller discussion that actually needs to include our attorneys' recommendations, which were not really considered.
If we don't, if we don't finish today with what I have to say, remember, then we can go ahead and push it off to next agenda.
I'm officially requesting that it also be on the October, the first meeting in October agenda, and I have materials that will need to be a part of the packet, so I will work with staff on that.
Okay. Staff, make a note of that for the next agenda, please. All right. Any other discussion of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the agenda with the addition of the discussion of the Budget Process.
Support.
Under new business.
Okay, moved by Wheelock, supported by Koffea. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're on to the Consent Calendar.
The purpose of the Consent Calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the Consent Calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed... If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. A, received. Number one, Department of Health and Human Services minutes of July 23rd. Number two, Department of Health and Human Services minutes of July 26th, pavilions. Number three, Michigan Township Association minutes of September 5th. Number four, road commission report for September 18th. Number five, expenditure report greater than $5,000. Number six, Conservation District August report. B, approvals. Number one, Health Department contract renewal for medical director. Number two, August 2019 claims approval. Number three, fiscal year 2019 budget amendments. Number four, Michigan Indigent Defense Commission amended compliance plan.
Any members of the board like anything removed from the consent calendar? Commissioner LaPointe.
B3.
Anybody else? Commissioner Caffia?
A4, the road commission report.
All right. Anyone else? Would any members of the public like anything removed for discussion? Seeing none. Okay. So, I have the removal of A4, the road commission report, by Commissioner Caffia, and the removal of B3, fiscal year 2019 budget amendments, by Commissioner LaPointe.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items A4 and B3.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Wheelock, supported by Klaus. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Hunley?
Yes.
Caffia?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes. Motion carries. We are on to special order of business. Sorry, Brad, you're not next.
We appreciate the preparedness, though.
I don't know why it works that way, but we have special orders of business prior to items removed from consent calendar. It's just the way it's always been. But we are on item 7A1, which is Board of Canvassers' election, page 99 in the packet. Somebody want to explain what that is for everybody?
Yes. There are four canvassers on our Board of Canvassers. The Board of Canvassers are the people that review all the paperwork and results after an election and certify it and make sure it's okay. At this time, two canvassers are up for, their term has expired. There's always two Republicans and two Democrats sitting on this board, so when we come up for an election, you will always be voting for one Republican and one Democrat. It's not either or, it's, you have to vote on both sides of this ballot. It is an open ballot because of the Open Meetings Act, so your name is on your ballot. What I would like you to do is just vote for one Republican and one Democrat, pass your ballots over here, and then at the beginning of unfinished business, maybe I'll just give the results.
Okay. Are any of these folks here that want to say anything?
Is anybody here?
All right. And just so we're aware, who are the past or current?
Well, I will mention that the Democratic canvassers are Stephen Horn, Diana Ketela, and John Snow. These are three people that were given, names that were given, nominees that were given to me from the Democratic chair. And on the Republican side, we have Karen Roth, Camilla Williams, and Linda Witt, which was given to me from the Republican chair. Linda Witt is the only one that is currently a canvasser, and she is a Republican canvasser. The rest are new.
Okay. Any commissioner questions about the process or what we're up to?
Does it have to, do our votes actually, they become public record, right?
They do.
Who we voted for?
That's why your name's on your ballot.
Just to be clear for the public, that you know how we voted.
Correct.
It is not a secret ballot.
It is not a secret ballot.
And no stump speeches?
Not for most.
Goodness. How am I going to choose?
You did receive two letters from two of the nominees that I forwarded to you.
All right. All right. Any questions? So, would you like us to just check the box and pass it in?
Check the box and pass it over.
Okay. It'll take a couple minutes to do that.
I should follow the instructions. I'm checking the box.
Completely darkened office. Oh, boy. Sure that cost me points on the meat test.
It's a get you in practice for next year.
Anything else on that topic?
No. Thank you.
All right. Now, we are moving on to item eight, items removed from the consent calendar. Brad, you're up. Thanks for your patience. All right. We have item, this is item A4 from the consent calendar, road commission report for September 18th meeting. This is page 18 in the packet. Commissioner Caffia, you have the floor.
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
Good. So, I just wanted to ask you to speak briefly to a question that I have on the report, which is in page, starting page 18 in our packet, particularly the item six, the East-West Corridor Study Recommended Solutions, and more, just to have you walk through that. Is that a comprehensive picture of the solutions for East-West that are currently being considered, or is that just a snapshot of some of the discussion? And could you just walk through those for the benefit of the public who may not have seen this 100-plus-page packet?
Yeah. Well, first of all, this was our first go-around. Last night, we had our second working session to talk about the East-West Corridor Study. And this was when we started with the short-term solutions. Last night, we incorporated the short-term with the medium-duration projects, which would include up to about a 10-year window. And amongst the discussion, we discussed the Keystone Corridor, all the way out to Chums Corners, taking into account the fact that MDOT is fixing Chums Corners to allow two through lanes and two left turns from each intersection, or each side of the intersection. And then we went up Keystone to Hammond. We took Hammond out to Four Mile, and then we also discussed some things out on Airport Road. So, we are in Phase Two of this process. Phase One was the actual report that we gained from OHM and the other consultants that told us, from a 30,000-foot view, these are the areas you should be looking at, these are the intersections, now you have to do some research to determine what your best solutions are. So, at last night's meeting, we discussed long segments of road that need to be addressed, specifically on Hammond, where we have some areas where what we call an hourglass effect, where we're going from four lanes to five lanes to four lanes to five lanes, and making that entire stretch a five-lane stretch from Three Mile out to LaFreniere. And at that point, then going down to four lanes because there's no turning traffic. But the, from there out to Four Mile, we would be moving to a three-lane section because the traffic volumes are lower. We discussed the addition of roundabouts at several intersections without the board making decisions, you know, just as for the discussion, and then we had a pretty decent turnout for people that had questions. We are looking at potentially adding two roundabouts on Keystone, one at Cass, one at River Road. And we are looking at adding capacity, turning off of Hammond onto Keystone, making Hammond, as I said, mainly five lanes, and potentially putting roundabouts at the Garfield intersection, the Three Mile intersection, and the Four Mile intersection. LaFreniere right now is handling traffic well. With some development, we will work on some access management to keep driveways consolidated so that we don't have one individual driveway for each business that comes out there. Those share driveways to reduce conflict points. And then we moved up to Airport, and the problem with Airport, we found, is in order to put roundabouts in, we have some severe impacts to adjacent businesses. And we could actually have to go in and take an entire business, or potentially two or three businesses at one intersection to put a roundabout. So, at this point, we pretty much are steering away from anything on Airport. We're going to optimize all the signals next year. We're going to change some of the striping to accommodate more vehicles, but we're going to start the engineering study, which is really Phase Two, of what happens when we put these roundabouts in. And does it mean that by putting one in, which we suspect that at, one at Cass and one at River, nothing has to be done at Hammond because HAC will have automatically gaps developed because of the roundabouts? So, it's just still in the preliminary phases. We've got a lot of engineering studies and models that still need to be done. And our next public meeting will be to discuss where the next crossing of the Boardman River will take place.
And what is the date and time of that next public meeting?
We have not set the date yet. We have, we couldn't really have any real discussion. It was more of a working session. So, we have our regular meeting on Thursday of next week, the 26th, and we will set the date for the public here, or the public work session at that meeting. We're guessing somewhere in the first two weeks of October.
Brad, thank you for that. If a member of the public wants to follow something that one of our boards or commissions does, they can request to be basically added to the email to receive notification? Is that an option for people who would like to follow the East-West Corridor Study?
Yes.
Where would they go to do that?
They definitely can. If they call our front desk or send an email to the GTRC info, they can be added. Or they can join us on Facebook. We always post everything on our Facebook page of when we have these special meetings that are coming up. And we're going to have several of them still. This is, like I said, still very preliminary as we start to set down some good designs, and it's a project that has to be stretched out because we're looking at somewhere in the 12 to 15 million dollar range just for what we're talking about right now. And then additional costs when we start talking about making an additional crossing over the Boardman.
Okay.
Okay.
That was very helpful. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions? We have a motion to receive and file.
Motion to accept the report. Receive and file.
Support.
Moved by Caffia, supported by Klaus, to receive and file the road commission report for September 18th meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brad. And we're on to item B3 from the consent calendar. This is the fiscal year 2019 budget amendments, page 72 in your packet. Commissioner LaPointe?
Yeah, I just have a quick question on the budget amendment for the senior center. Sales commission. I was just curious, $21,000 transaction, increased revenue of the sales commission and to increase expense for event travel.
Just give a page number for specific.
75.
75.
Page 75.
The senior center of programming provides, or they have various events where they travel to different destinations. The revenue is what they charge the seniors for that, for those trips, so that fully covers the cost of the trip. So, the sales commission is the revenue, or the contributions that the participants pay to be able to go on those trips, and the event travel is the cost of those trips. So, it's not funded by the village, it's fully funded by the seniors' contribution.
Okay. That makes perfect sense. Sales commission just seemed a little misnomer. I was wondering, who's getting commissions over there?
Is that what the revenue, line item is called? I didn't bring the actual budget amendment, but we could look at renaming that.
Yeah, it's just, it just piqued my interest. All right. Any further discussion or a motion to approve? Motion to approve.
Support.
Moved by LaPointe, supported by Jewitt, to approve the fiscal year 2019 budget amendments. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dean. And we'll move on to item 9A in our departmental items. This is the Grand Travers Sheriff Office Bailiff Program, page 104 in your packet. Commissioner Henshaw?
There may be some needs for technology if you want to take a couple minutes.
Sure. Should we take a three-minute break? Will they get ready for that? I could use a stretch. All right. We'll take a short recess.[1491.41]
The Human Resources Department has weighed in on this. And that there's an issue with a lot of overtime and with forced overtime. In their research, there's a possibility with excessive overtime for increased health problems and safe increased safety risks and higher rate of mistakes, decreased productivity, increased absenteeism, increased turnover rates, staff burnout, a poor work-life balance, and loss of time with the family. We've put together a job description for the bailiffs. Probably most importantly, we don't see any increase needed to fund this. So how's that going to work? If we're able to start this on November 1st, we've identified funding in our current budget and the court's budgets to come up with funding in 2019 for November and December. And this would be personnel costs. This would be a cost for equipping and training the bailiffs. And money in 2020, from the recommended 2020 budget, we have funding from the MIDC program. We think we are able to reduce the amount that's been budgeted for boarding out inmates and also for overtime. And the District Court and the Family and Probate Court are also able to provide some funding out of next year's recommended budget. So as far as personnel are concerned, we put the cart before the horse. We wanted to know, before the program was established, would people want to work part-time? By part-time, I mean four hours a day, a half a day, in the morning or in the afternoon. And the scheduling, which will be up to the courts, will provide for a bailiff to come to work and work from eight until noon, one until five, wherever the case may be, and be active in one of the six different courts, so to speak, in the Hall of Justice. So we asked if anybody would be interested in being a part-time bailiff. And there was interest. We had 20, we have currently 22 or 23 people that are interested. I didn't want to set up a program and then find out nobody wanted to work it. So it was a little bit of the cart before the horse. We have people interested in working in the bailiff program. So the overtime costs in the jail are not specific to a housing officer, a court officer, a prisoner transport. When we have vacancies that need to be filled with overtime, when the officer comes to work, assignments are then made on where they will work and what will, what they will do that day. So it's not specific to all this overtime is because we need bailiffs. All this overtime is because we need housing officers. So I have some four specific weeks from this summer on where we had overtime slots available. And we post these so officers can sign up for them, so they know what their work schedule will be, which will, which also reduces but doesn't eliminate forced overtime. It's worked fairly well. So this is the week of June 10th through June 16th. There was 116 hours of overtime. And the true cost for that week in the jail was $5,441 for that week overtime. The week of the following week, the June 17th through the 23rd, there was 158 hours. All those slots, eight hours, most of them eight-hour shifts during the day, had to be filled because we had to do the work. That cost $7,410. In August, excuse me, in July, the week of July 22nd to the 28th, the overtime for that week was $5,909. That's a week, seven days. The week of August 12th through the 19th, the overtime cost, again, because we had to do the job, we had to perform the duties, was $4,971. Those are just some snapshots of what it costs us weekly. What about yearly? Our true costs for overtime in 2015, 16, 17, and 18 is on this slide.
Could you define true cost versus cost?
True cost is salary, wages, benefits, everything. Yes?
Is, is that a cost above standard cost if you had somebody working those hours and it wasn't overtime? If you, if you had, if you had ample people to fill the spot, you wouldn't have overtime, you would have a person at standard rate there?
Correct.
So is that overtime cost from a standard rate up?
If, for example, and I checked with the Finance Department, the salary for a regular hourly, regular hourly rate, these are fake numbers.
Right.
If it's $30 an hour.
Okay.
You have to add 35% of that to cover the benefit costs. If the overtime rate is 45, 35, $30 an hour, overtime is time and a half. So that rate is $45 an hour, you add 35% to that. So the true cost is with all the benefits, not just the line item for salaries.
And where I'm going with that is that the difference between standard, $30 an hour and 45 is 15. So 15 is truly the cost of overtime.
Well, I think there's a percentage built in there.
Plus a percentage, plus a percentage for
Right.
benefits, yes. Is that what, is that what we're talking about or are we talking?
No.
Okay, we're talking
We have to have somebody in these positions and we have to pay them overtime. And this is what it cost, the true cost of the overtime cost.
Right, and where I'm going
So what you're looking for is the difference. If we had people, what would the difference be?
Correct.
I can't tell you what that is right now. It'd have to be figured out.
Understood. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Basically, it'd be a third of what the number is that's up there.
Pardon?
Basically, it'd be about a third of what the number is that's up there.
Because, because the, the time and a half, the, the, when you, you know, and I do it too, I run overtime numbers, including the, the time and a half. But if, in fact, I had personnel in those shifts for, at a straight time, the premium, the premium cost of the overtime is the 50%. And then you've got a little bit extra for benefit, but it doesn't cost you more for health insurance, it doesn't cost you more for, for retirement, what it, well, it does retirement because theirs are based on wages, but where its biggest difference is it costs you more for your federal tax, your social security, your Medicare.
Okay, I'm, I just wanted to understand the number.
So the true cost, what it costs to put somebody in one of those overtime positions is what I'm looking at, not just the salary, it's the benefits added in, okay? Which is the true cost because those have to be paid. So these are the true costs of our overtime. The four-year average of overtime in the jail, true cost, is $260,000. The two-year average is $290,000. And this year, we are on pace to spend over $340,000 in overtime alone in the jail. And into that, because we don't have people to make the prisoner trips, Law Enforcement and Road Patrol Division does that.
Those are, would those also include the trips to the Lelandau County?
No.
Okay.
These are going to, well, no, to, to transport inmates up there typically done by the corrections officers. This is a, this is a transport to take inmates to Jackson Prison to pick somebody up in Marion County statewide, generally speaking. And it's done by sergeants and, and deputies, typically by the deputies. So last year, it was well over $14,000 out of the patrol budget to make these prisoner trips. And so far this year through September 5th, the costs are over $19,000. Now, some of this is overtime, some's done on regular time. And if it's done on regular time, if you look at the top of the slide, in 2018, the regular time was 170.75 hours. That's time that a patrol officer or sergeant was not working law enforcement duties in the county. This year so far, regular hours is 68 and a half. So when an officer on regular duty from the law enforcement division makes a prisoner trip, he's not doing his law enforcement duties in the county. Probate Judge Stanton and Family Court Judge Stanton, she wears two hats, in her position has provided two letters of support for the program. And because she can't be here today, she provided us and you with a video, which I hope works.
I am the probate judge and the family court judge for the 13th Circuit, and I want to thank you for allowing me to appear here today via video, because this is a very important issue for me with respect to this. First of all, I want to thank the administration and the commissioners for even addressing the issue regarding bailiffs with the probate and the family court. I've had conversations with every single administrator since I've been on the bench and that with a, with Mr. Menzel, Mr. Upel, and Mr. Elder. And Mr. Elder is the first one that has responded to that. So first of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Elder, for doing, for doing what you are doing here today. As I indicated many years ago, 2013, I brought this issue to, to the attention of the administrators. And I don't know if you're aware, but there is a statute and it's MCL 600.581, that there is a requirement of the Sheriff's Department that there has to be available at every single hearing for the court. And what I'm going to do for you this time, I'm going to read it to you. And I'm reading this also because I know there may be other people available in the courtroom. You may, you may have a copy of the statute in front of you, but they may not, not in the courtroom in the, in the, at the meeting here. It indicates that the sheriff of the county or his deputy shall attend the Circuit Court, Probate Court, and District Court sessions when requested by these courts and the sessions of other courts as specifically required by law. The judge at his discretion shall fix, determine, and regulate the attendance of court sessions of the sheriff and his deputies. And they may fine the sheriff and his deputies for failure to attend. As I indicated, when I came onto the bench in 2013, we did not have deputies or bailiffs in my courtroom on a routine basis. We do have it part-time and we, when we know that there's going to be a real contentious case, and they will come now on an emergency basis. But the reality is, the kind of cases that I oversee, you just don't know what is going to happen at any time in the courtroom. And I think it's incredibly important for a liability point of view from, for the county to really recognize this. I agree, it hasn't happened yet in Grand Travers County, but it's, it potentially could happen at any time here. And I don't know if you're also aware, and once again, this is for the commissioners, of a memo that went out by the Michigan Supreme Court on July 2nd, 2018. And it indicates in there that in society, in today's society, threats and act of violence are occurring in greater frequency, greater frequency in courtrooms. With those thoughts in mind, the Supreme Court has recommended that a court security officer or bailiff police officer be present in the courtroom at all times when a judge is seated on the bench. I sadly also have had some personal experience with this. I do know the judge down in Marion County, Judge Mayfield, where the person was shot and killed in her courtroom. You can never recover from that emotionally. And the liability for the county for not having the appropriate safeguards in place would be astronomical. So what I'm asking you is I'm asking you to please support this request that we have for the bailiffs. We need them, not only do we need them for not only myself, but the staff around here, we also need it for the people that come to watch the court. Because we're all placed at risk without the proper security. Thank you very much for your time today.
Sheriff, before, before you continue in the presentation, I just want to request that you provide us with, with this PowerPoint and the documents, many of them are quite small print, and those were not in the packet, so we are seeing this for the first time right now. And I believe it's important for us to be able to sort of deliberate more fully on what you're presenting today. I would appreciate that.
Yep, not a problem. And I do this deliberately because if this is provided in the packet, you may get phone calls or requests from the media to comment on this. You haven't heard our presentation, so you don't have all the information, okay? I want you to hear this first, okay? I want it to be presented to you, and yes, you may take some time to deliberate on this, that's fine. But my point is, you need to hear this first before you get asked questions and don't have all the answers, aren't able to ask questions, so.
I appreciate that, and I suppose from my side of the table, I also am then asked potentially to vote on it the day of
Yeah.
when I have not had adequate time to really think it through and ask you questions, you know, with, with time. So that's why I'm requesting that you provide that in advance in the future.
And all the board members.
Thank you.
So we've, I have also a support letter from Judge Cooney and Judge Stepka. We've developed a training program, and this is solely dependent on who may be hired. Somebody walking in off the street may later need a lot of training. It may take a couple of weeks. Someone who has had this training, i.e. former corrections officers, we've had interest from them, former police officers, we've had interest from them, okay? They will be able to get through the training or not require as much. So you've asked, you haven't asked, but somebody's going to ask, what is the cost? On the agenda item, we put down $125,000. I've talked with Mr. Bott about funding for 2019 and 2020 and what our plans are. He's very comfortable with what we plan to do. The estimate may be a little high because the bailiffs who could be hired, there's a salary range between $17.79 and top at $22.25. If we were to hire five part-time bailiffs and pay them all $22.25 an hour, and they all worked 20 hours per week, 52 weeks out of the year, the total salary cost would be They're not going to work 20 hours a week, 52 weeks of the year. How many hours are they going to work? We're not quite sure because we haven't been there. So I just point that out, that courts will be closed on holidays, they may have a light schedule, they may need only one bailiff or two bailiffs for the day, not five. So I think we're, we've been very conservative here in, in budgeting and what the expenses are. Carol Stocking, the District Court Administrator, also has some comments that she would like to present.
I can do that and you can narrate it?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll talk.
Can you do that?
Yeah, I can. So while Chris is getting this ready, I want to just say I'm Carol Stocking, the court administrator for the District Court. I think one of the things that we oftentimes hear in the news is about incidents that happen in courthouses around the state, around the country. And maybe you wonder whether it actually happens here in our county, and the fact is, we, it does. It's happened in the District Court on a number of occasions in all counties, Antrim, Lelandau, and Grand Travers. And it happens in all of the courts, not just the District Court. What we have here for you today is just a, maybe a six to 10-minute video that we'd like to play. We'll maybe fast forward through a part of it. But this is a gentleman who was in front of Judge Phillips last fall, last fall. And he was scheduled on the docket at nine o'clock in the morning, and we didn't have a bailiff in the courtroom. And because the judge, it was scheduled, the judge began the hearing at nine o'clock. And so, are you, you can go ahead and start it, Chris. Maybe even turn it down a bit. I, I don't know that we need to hear so much because I'm not even sure you're going to be able to hear it much. Maybe we'll just watch, watch the part. So you can see that he takes a seat in the, at the table where the defendant is supposed to sit, and the prosecuting attorney, assistant prosecuting attorney is the gal on the left, and of course Judge Phillips is on the, on the bench. What happens here is that as Judge Phillips is talking to him, he's getting more and more agitated. Somewhere in this video, you'll see the, we have a, right there is the guy that's with the bald head, Mr. Wilson, is the probation officer who's working court that day. And he is standing in the front of the courtroom because he is the one who takes the papers and the defendant, you know, whatever, works the courtroom and takes the papers to the clerks. Well, as soon as this guy stood up, Mr. Wilson stepped forward and placed himself more between the defendant and the judge. And you can see now coming right in behind is finally the court officer who, who is bringing in the defendant. He is totally unaware of what's going on in the courtroom. He has, he is clueless that there's agitation, that there is something happening. He comes in the back door like he would normally, and he is, and he's got a defendant with him in custody. And things are going south quickly. Now, it's going off camera a little bit, but you can see that the corrections officer who comes in is trying to handcuff the defendant that is agitated. He, he, we also, coming in behind him is an intern, I think, or someone who's observing, working with him, but he's not a corrections officer. So the corrections officer starts to try to handcuff the man, and he acts as if he's going to comply. And then he swings around when he tries to get the other hand cuffed.
Carol?
And things don't go well. Yes?
I just want to give a little bit of context.
Please.
He was in court for sentencing. He'd been convicted of making a bomb threat at Munson. So he was somebody that there was concern about him being violent before this all started.
So now it goes totally off camera, but over, off the camera, the corrections officer has pulled his taser. You can see the defendant he had in custody heads to the other side of the courtroom. Again, nobody's caring for him, but he's getting out of the line of danger. And, and so the corrections officer has pulled his taser. It gets knocked a bit. It didn't, he doesn't drop it, he deploys it. So it does shoot the tasers off, but it does not hit the defendant. At about the same time, we have had staff who have made a call over to the jail. Judge Phillips, in this case, did not leave the courtroom, you'll see that. His court recorder, which is sitting right exactly where all of this is taking place, is now up behind him on the bench rather than leaving the courtroom. This whole thing could have went really, really bad. Fortunately, it didn't. The captain from the sheriff's, from the jail came over, and the defendant was taken out of the courtroom. But this is, this kind of thing really does happen in our courts. And, and sometimes it's even, like, we don't ever get a corrections officer for civil days, and sometimes those are the most contentious because those are where people are suing people. And so, you know, in Judge Stanton's courtroom, I don't know that Chris was going to say anything this morning, but in Judge Stanton's courtroom, she's taking children away from this kind of stuff makes me cry. So she's taking children away from people, and she has no bailiff. So anyway, I just want to really reiterate that bailiffs in the courtroom are seriously needed, and not only for the judges and the court staff, but for the audience, the people who are there observing, the jurors who might be in the courtroom, you know, anyone. So thank you for hearing what I have to say, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask, answer them. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the presentation. I, and I'm sure the court staff would entertain any questions.
Question is, in Lelandau and Antrim County, are there bailiffs there? They, they have bailiffs in their
I'll let Carol speak to that. Yes, they do have a bailiff in Lelandau County.
Actually, in Lelandau and Antrim County, they have programs exactly like we're proposing here today. They have retirees or part-time bailiffs who are not scheduled to work in their jail. They just do court, court work.
How, how long have they had that practice? I mean, has it been 10 years or forever?
Oh, gosh, I've been in this position for almost 20 years, and it's been the whole time I've been here. So before that, I couldn't speak to that.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Wielak.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we implement a bailiff program in the Grand Travers Sheriff's Office. Get a motion a second, then we can have a discussion.
Okay, is this the suggested motion?
Yep.
Is this the one beginning November 1st, 2019, using identified funds?
Support.
Okay, moved by Wielak, supported by Klaus. And the suggested motion just, I just lost my page here, to implement bailiff program within sheriff's office budget beginning on or about November 1st, 2019, using identified funds in in various court and sheriff's office budgets and MIDC funds.
Discussion, sir.
Okay.
This is a discussion that we've had for many, many years that I've been sitting here. You know, I remember sitting in meetings with the DK people with Mr. Kendall's daughter, you know, specifically having this discussion a number of years ago. And DK isn't even here anymore. But we have a, it's not that we need more corrections officers. Well, we probably need more, but we, we need more corrections officers. And the sheriff made the comment, more corrections officers. More importantly, we need all of our corrections officers where they belong. You know, I understand the safety that's required in the courts, you know. And I've had long discussions with, with Judge Stanton and Carol and our District Court judges and our Circuit Court judges. The, the problems that we have when, you know, like Carol said, when, when you take children away from parents, you know, even though, you know, we've always thought, well, family court is really safe. That becomes really emotional. And when people get emotional, that's when they sometimes get very out of control. So we need to make sure we do that. You know, one of the reasons that we hadn't implemented a bailiff program in the past, in all honesty, is it hasn't always received the greatest support from some of the judges. You know, they wanted the sheriff to have an officer there, you know. And I believe by, by putting bailiffs as a division of the sheriff's office, we can cover that. You know, we, there's some areas where, and I'm sure in Leland, isn't there, isn't there bailiff part of the court system?
No.
Or is this from the sheriff?
From the sheriff. Oh, Leland, Antrim, Sheriff.
But in, in some counties, the corrections officers, or you will, or the bailiffs, are actually court officers that are paid for by the court, not by the sheriff. But I think, I think we cover ourselves very well with, with a program like this. We need our corrections officers in our jail where they belong, you know. And that's, that's the most critical part about this. But we also need to make sure that our courtrooms are safe for our, our staff, the defendants, and anyone else that's in the courtroom. You know, we had a Grand Tauran Sheriff's Officer could have been severely injured a couple of years ago. Was it in Moncombe County? Remember Nate?
Where the trial was.
Where the trial was?
Yes, that's correct.
You know, where, where a gentleman ended up with a gun. And unfortunately, our officer wasn't injured, and neither was anyone else. And the guy was taken into custody rapidly. But, but, you know, there's, there's still huge potential for, for very violent things to happen in courtrooms. Even without a weapon, things can get very violent in the courtroom. So we need to make sure that we're safe, and, and the bailiffs is the way to do that. Get our corrections officers back where they belong.
Okay, Commissioner Hundley next, and then Commissioner LaPointe.
So this is obviously not an area of expertise of mine. And so apologies if some of these questions may be remedial. But so the 2.5 FTEs that we're talking about in a, in a bailiff's program separate from corrections officers or law enforcement officers, just intuitively, it seems to me, or the question is, does it, is that, is it the best way to get what we want out of it? To have additional people who are half-time? So I would imagine they don't get benefits because they're below whatever threshold. But on the other hand, now you're looking for a set of people who are willing to take the job for, for half-time as opposed to people who may be spending, I think we're talking about that as opposed to having people who are full-time, and half of their, their, their time is spent in the jail, and now half of the time is going to be spent in the courts. And it's, we're talking about where the buckets of money are coming from because of where they're spending their time. So first question is, am I right in understanding that? We're talking about getting maybe retired people who'd be working 20 hours a week instead of 40?
Well, not necessarily retired. We're not, but.
Right.
No, this would be separate from the sheriff's office. The bailiffs that would, 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 would take inmates from the jail to the court and return them, okay? If, if that was needed. They would be in the courts as requested by the, by the courts, by the judges. And on occasions, there may be, Sergeant Scott from the jail is here. We could have bailiffs. We could have corrections officers performing bailiff duties during the day in maybe four courts, which means there are four corrections officers not in the jail. Okay?
Right.
Part-time positions would eliminate that.
Right.
Okay?
And, and so I guess my, my knock-on question to there is, totally hearing what Commissioner Wielak is saying, and I think what you're saying too, is that our corrections officers, we need them in the jails so that they're, you know, where they, they need to be. But at the same time, making that job one that is attractive to, to potential officers, is there, is there any merit to, to thinking about, well, we need, we need this additional staffing, right, in order to get people in, to have officers or bailiffs in each of the courts while the courts are in session? But does it make the job more attractive if, if the officer isn't full-time in the jail setting? That they spend some of their time in the jail setting, spend some of their time in the court setting? And that, I don't know. Again, it just intuitively, it seems like maybe the court setting is somewhat less stressful. And so that makes for a more rounded day for people.
Yes, and you're absolutely correct. So if I hear you and understand you correctly, you're suggesting, well, maybe we hire two and a half more full-time corrections officers instead of five part-time people?
I guess so. At least that's what I'm, what I'm, you know.
Yeah, so therein is the problem. We can't find corrections officers, full-time corrections officers now. We have vacancies.
Right.
And if we hire more, we have to, we, we, that's been the problem. We can't, we can't find them. We can't get them. This is an alternative way of taking care of the courts. Part-time work for people who may be retired or who are independently wealthy who just like something to do part-time.
Right.
And so one of the main issues, one of the main drivers of this is that we can't find corrections officers.
Okay.
And trying to find two or two and a half more just adds to the problem.
Right.
So, plus the cost. We would have to, you know, figure out how, how these officers would be, would be funded.
Right, the additional benefits and so forth.
Obviously, they would cost more.
Right, right. So then, yeah. I mean, I guess the, the only other questions I have are kind of finance-related. The, the two and a half FTEs would cover a bailiff in each of the six courts for all of the hours that the courts are in session? In other words, is that, we're talking about it being a conservative number because there's holidays and all of that sort of thing. But, but would the two and a half cover all six courts for all of potential days? Or is there a potential that, well, there's going to be some times where you need two bailiffs in the court because of whatever? I don't know. So that, that it might end up being, that there is some hidden cost that we're not thinking of now?
Well, what, what we're looking at is, is five part-time people, okay? And this is new to us. It all depends on the scheduling. There may be days that they only need two bailiffs each for a half-day. That's the scheduling with, with the courts, okay? I have told the court staff that if we implement this program, that number one, they have to schedule in at least four-hour blocks. Somebody's not going to come in, oh, we need a bailiff for an hour. Or we need a bailiff from, you know, 2:00 to 4:00 this afternoon.
Right.
I don't think people are going to come in for two hours. Especially, and more so, one hour. We need a bailiff for one hour on next Thursday.
Right.
I don't think somebody's going to come in for one hour. So there's quite a heavy load placed on the courts to make sure that when a bailiff is there from 8:00 until noon, let's say, that they're doing something from 8:00 until noon. They're not sitting around from 10:00 to 11:00 because the courts haven't got anything for them to do. I surely don't want to pay them for sitting around.
So the only other thing I would say is, I think even just from the statute, as Judge Stanton pointed out, it seems like it's something we have to do or something along these lines that we need to do. And typically, if the departments have sorted it out, and it's basically revenue-neutral, as far, I mean, I, I don't want to be one to stand in the way. But I also share Commissioner Caffia's general outlook on, on all of these things. I think I, there's been a, a previous thing that came up, and I felt, it was the HR policies, all of which were great, and they sailed through. But it felt like I just hadn't had time to read all 300 pages and so forth. And so we, we kicked it out one meeting so that we could get through all of the details and, you know, some of these numbers. So, you know, I'd, I'd rather get those and then take the vote next time around. But, but it certainly seems like something we should move forward with.
Okay, Commissioner LaPointe, and then Jewett, and then Caffia.
Well, first of all, this seems like a no-brainer. And the question would be, why didn't we do this years ago? I, I couldn't see the qualifications that you had put up there. You had the list on there.
The job description?
Pardon me, job description?
Job description.
Correct. And I'm assuming that they're going to have, those individuals will be armed. They'll be well-trained. They'll, they'll be able to do the exact job in every way that a correction officer is currently doing.
Yes, that, that's the plan.
And you had mentioned, and it was encouraging, you mentioned 22 or 23 people that you've already talked to that probably are already qualified in most of those regards that would be interested in doing it. So you don't see any, if, if this gets approved, you don't see any difficulty in getting this thing started in terms of finding qualified candidates?
Well, we haven't vetted all of the candidates. We, we, we know some of them personally. And as far as I'm concerned, it could start next week.
I mean, from a, from a financial standpoint, you're talking $17 to $22 an hour with, with no benefits versus $30 an hour, paying them time and a half at 45, fully with all benefits. So I would think just in reduced overtime, $125,000, this, this will be a net additional cost to the, to the budget going forward. The one question, I talked to Carol just at, at the break. When I was reading this, I wasn't aware of the qualifications or, you know, what a bailiff did. And she assured me, we both read the same article. In New York, they had two bailiffs. One was 92 years old and in a wheelchair. And the other was 89 years old and on oxygen and could. So you're assuring us we're going to get qualified people that can handle the, the issue that, that we all saw in that, in that video. So I would clearly support this from a, it's physically a wise move, and it's, I'm ready to proceed with this as, as soon as, as soon as possible.
Well, just to your, just to your comment, no, we're not looking for 92-year-olds in a wheelchair on oxygen. We are seriously considering that they pass our physical maintenance test, which all the corrections officers do, to make sure they're physically able to perform the job.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jewett.
Thanks, Sheriff. I will be supporting this, but I do have a couple of questions. How many corrections officers are we short right now?
So we have vacancies, true vacancies, to hire two people.
So.
And on the schedule? So on the, I mentioned there are 34 positions on the schedule. And currently, right now, we have officers to fill 29 of those. So we are short five for various reasons.
So with this, with this program, would that change those numbers at all? Would you still be two corrections officers short?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So this, this bailiff program would not change the numbers required there?
Correct.
Okay. Then.
It would, it would take that responsibility off of the corrections officers, no matter if we had 34, or 29, or 30.
I guess what I'm getting to is with this bailiff program, though, these correction officers, they're on the schedule no matter what, though. They might be in court, or they might be in?
They might, it could be on a, on a transport. They could be, you know, housing officers. They could be intake officers.
Okay.
We have to have people to do those jobs.
Right.
And it requires corrections officers, whether they're on, on, on a regular day or there because, on overtime, because we need the people there.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering if, if this bailiff program would change the actual numbers of need. And another question I have is, how many inmates do we have actually housed elsewhere right now?
I believe zero. Yeah.
Okay. It fluctuates up and down. What we've done is that, a quick primer, we have 168 beds, physical beds. We have one section that has six cells with two beds in there each. Typically, those cells are used only to house one inmate. They're in there for some reason, whether it's a medical segregation, administrative segregation, or something like that. Very seldom do we have two people in each of those cells. So now, we're automatically short six beds. Now we're down to 162. And to officially, to efficiently operate the jail, we should be at 85% of what our bed capacity is. That's about 143. And that's so we can classify people, move them around, get the right people in the right cells. So we should be at 143 to make things work well, fully staffed.
Fully staffed, well, I mean, in a sense, you're fully staffed.
What we've done, as I've said, you know, we don't have the people to take care of those. So try to keep our in-house numbers around, around 130.
Okay.
Because we have, we're short-staffed. That makes it more difficult to operate, operate the jail.
Yeah, right now, you are fully staffing, but through overtime.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Nope, I'm good.
All right, I have Commissioner Caffia, then Klaus, and then myself.
Thank you. So no question that it is critical that we have safety for everyone involved, the judges, the staff, the public, and including the defendants in, in all of our courtrooms. That's not at all in question in my mind. But I do, I do have just some questions, again, because I just got this information today. First, what percentage of your jail population are there? Thinking about capacity, right? The bigger picture question around your, the number of corrections officers and the amount of overtime, et cetera. So what percentage of your jail population generally tends to be pre-trial on non-violent charges who are being held in your jail and for how, roughly how long?
Okay, I can't answer that specifically today. I could find out for today. We used to get monthly reports on populations, pre-sentence misdemeanors, that kind of stuff?
It was a third a couple of weeks ago when I asked.
Uh-huh?
It was about a third.
Well, I'm guessing that's a third. That computer program got lost in cyberspace, something, when they upgraded systems. So we don't get those reports anymore. So we could, we could find out today, okay? And it would change day to day. Now, I don't know.
Sheriff, if you do get that number, is it possible for you to separate out people who couldn't post an original bond versus people who are in there pre-trial because they violated a no-contact order? Or they continue drinking while on bond? Is it possible to separate that out?
I'd have to check. That just may have to be done manually. I don't know if the system we have in place is able to extract that information. But we can, we can look at that.
I think that's an important thing if you're looking at how many people are in there pre-trial. How many of them are prohibited from contacting their victim? And then they continue to contact their victim, and that's why they're in jail pre-trial.
So we can look into that. I understand your concerns.
It's a bigger picker, picture question around capacity and the, the longer-term question around jail cost and potential construct, right? So I, I want to get a clearer picture. And I guess I'm wondering, if you're willing, I, I get that the old computer program is no more, but a monthly report with some of those specifications would be really, I think, helpful for us as we're trying to make a fairly. fairly large decision about bigger picture.
Yes, we'll get with the IT department and see if they can, because it would be up to them, our records management system is all computerized, what they may be able to extract, instead of having to do that manually on a daily basis. I think it may take some time to do that, but I think we'll ask IT to try to get those answers for you.
Thank you. And then, specific to the funding, I understand from the page that we have in our packet on this topic, that the MIDC, which, that's acronyms, Michigan Indigent Defense?
Council.
Commission?
Commission, correct.
That there's funding from that to help pay for this, and then you're planning to have reductions in your requested budget to make up the rest? Is that accurate?
Our budget, and the courts.
The sheriff's department, and the courts' budget.
They're sharing in the cost also.
Great. So, questions around that are, what portion of this total cost will be covered by that MIDC money versus courts and sheriff's department budget? And is it in perpetuity? Like, when we get five years out, is this still going to be funded? I'm not arguing whether we should have that. The safety is critical, this is an important conversation, and I want to look ahead fiscally at what are we looking at, a sunsetting of the MIDC and/or the reduction, you know, the funds coming from court and sheriff's department budgets.
Okay. So, $65,000 is from the MIDC grant, that's in October through September calendar year.
Did you say 65, or 55?
65.
Okay.
65,000.
Yep.
And the remaining funds coming from reductions in our recommended budget, which we have, and the courts.
Okay.
Now, the MIDC grant program, I don't know how long that's going to last. It's a grant program, Mr. Forsyth knows all about that. We apply next year, I believe we can apply for more money.
So we have to re-up every year to try to keep this?
Yes, apply for more money, which would offset our costs. We may see a huge reduction in overtime. We can't tell you that right now. This is something new, so there's a little bit of, there's some unknowns here, but we want to get this off the ground and try it. It may not work. We're pretty positive on the fact that it will.
And is the court, and, so I under, okay, thank you for that. So I understand that the MIDC grant is something that we have to reapply for every year in order to continue getting that $65,000, or whatever amount it ends up being in future years. From your perspective and the court's perspective, are you planning to continue making up that, you know, we're talking 125, roughly, thousand a year? So that's the other half essentially of the cost between the courts and the sheriff's department out of your budget, or is it going to be asked for from elsewhere?
No, it'll come from our budgets, okay? And we think that the overtime is going to be reduced.
Right, there'll be savings potentially.
However, there's no guarantees there, if, because I can't predict what our staffing levels are going to be for corrections officers. And we may have to pay corrections officers overtime just to be in the building.
Right.
To handle their duties in the building.
Right.
Okay? But this will relieve them from any court functions, where we typically have assigned officers on overtime, just because they have to be in the courts.
Okay. Thank you. Regarding the, there was reference in this, again, one-pager that we have in our packet from your office, there was reference to creating a separate division within the sheriff's department. Now, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly, it's not spoken to here, and I don't, maybe it was in the PowerPoint, but I need to look at it again. This is not creating an additional bargaining unit, because there would not be benefits, is that accurate?
At this point, yes, that's correct. This would be, so we can track the funding, and it would be separate from the corrections budget.
So you're not creating a new bargaining unit?
No.
Because we have quite a few already, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. And we're looking at part-time, no benefits?
Correct.
So we have talked about that, and we want to make sure that that is something that is, to start with, it's going to be an hourly, non-contract employee, that will be temporary in nature, that doesn't necessarily qualify them to be represented by Labor Council, but they will have the opportunity at some point, if this goes beyond the trial period, I thought we were discussing, they could potentially unionize.
But they would be, would they be part of the corrections unit, or they would be a separate?
It would be up to them.
God knows, we already have 13, so we don't need any more.
Well, that's, yeah, that's completely within their, that's completely within their right, but the original thought was to have a trial period between November and sometime in mid to late 2020, that we reevaluate all of these things, and partly because some of these assumptions that the sheriff has provided to you in the funding are the MIDC officer, what happens to those funds, what happens to the overtime funds. So, that is the discussion that we had previously with the sheriff and courts, and I think it's a good way to look at it.
Okay. I guess my question for the, to the original motion is, given that, I think this is probably absolutely the right thing to do, however, because there are some clarifications that I would certainly like to have about looking at the longer term, whether Commissioner Wheelock would consider a friendly amendment to postpone to our first meeting in October, to give us the opportunity to think more carefully, look at this PowerPoint, ask you further questions, and possibly the judges and staff, and then come back for a vote at the first meeting in October.
I don't think...
So is that something that you'd be open to?
I don't think that would be an amendment, that would be a table.
Friendly amendment?
It doesn't really fit the definition of amendment, but if you want to move to table, you can make that motion.
Well, Robert's rules told me I can't actually move to table, it has to be moved to postpone to a later date.
Yeah.
Right, so I was, yeah, trying to go specifically by this process, but yes, I'm moving to postpone to the first meeting in October, and that we bring it up for a vote at that time.
Okay.
With all the materials that the sheriff will then provide us between now and the first meeting in October.
Okay, so we have a new motion.
What would you like?
Well, first of all, this PowerPoint.
No problem.
And an opportunity to read all the documents, and ask you and the courts any further questions, and I want to talk to administration, and just get a little bit better handle on impact, budget impact going forward.
Give me a second.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone this vote to the next meeting. Is there a second?
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is not a debatable motion, so we will simply take a roll call vote. So the vote is whether we postpone the motion to the next meeting. Is everyone clear on the motion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Wheelock?
No.
Jewitt?
No.
Hunley?
Yes.
Kofia?
Yes.
LaPointe?
No.
Klaus?
No.
Henchel?
No.
Motion failed.
Motion fails, we return to the original motion, and I think we had, Mr. Alger wanted to say some comments next.
I did. The sheriff and the courts, Donna, Chris, Dean, we've all worked on this collectively, and we have a couple of, I thought what we were going to be doing is proposing to the board to have a trial period that we can just feel this out. This is something that's been longstanding, as Commissioner Wheelock has stated. The courts historically have wanted to have uniform corrections officers within the courts to provide those duties. The courts and the sheriff have come up with what I see as a very creative way to tackle that problem, that is going to potentially save us a lot of money. So, I support the concept in terms of a trial. The questions that Commissioner Kofia was bringing up is surrounding that MIDC funding. We do believe we'll have that funding in the future through our submission of compliance plans, however, there are other assumptions within the formula for funding that we need to address. I don't know for in perpetuity if the courts are going to be able to give $30,000, or if the recognition of overtime savings is going to be $15,000. So, what we were hoping to have is some type of a gathering, a statistical gathering period of time, that we can look at this before the submission of the 2021 budget, and then we could address it at that time. I do believe that you're going to see a significant reduction in the cost of providing the bailiff services, because right now, that cost is being borne by the sheriff's office, and that's a high price to pay.
We're, and we're okay with that. We're not saying this is going to work perfect, okay? That's fine, it's going to take some time to look at it. You know, the budget process starts in May, I think that's way too soon to have an analysis of, you know, cost savings. It would be later in the year, but the sooner we start, the sooner we can start sorting some of these things out. So, yeah, we did talk about a one-year trial basis, that's okay with us, but I think we'll see some reductions in overtime, negating the need to ask for high-dollar amounts in 2021's budget in a...
The pilot program is not referenced in the motion, for clarity.
Okay.
It does not reference pilot, or one year, or any time period.
I didn't prepare the motion, so...
All right, Deputy Administrator Forsyth.
Thank you, I just want to talk on MIDC. So, yes, what's been stated earlier is, we don't know when we will have those MIDC funds. In fact, we don't even know what we'll get for the next year. Now, under the consent counter, we had an amended compliance plan. We're confident that's going to be approved, but we got notice from MIDC last week that because of what's going on in Lansing with the legislature, and unable to come to an agreement as to the budget, that impacts the MIDC budget, and they have transmitted to us a draft contract, which would allow us to take our 2019 funds and carry them over to 2020, because there's uncertainty as to what us, the other counties, are going to get for MIDC funding. Beyond 2020, we don't even know if the MIDC program is going to exist. Now, if I'm betting, I'm betting that there will be MIDC 2021, 2022, down the road, but we just, we don't know, and I don't think the MIDC staff, they even know.
Okay. I have Commissioner Klaus, and then I have a list of questions, and then we'll start round two.
Okay. With this position of the bailiff, is, are your corrections officers and your road patrol, your deputies, are they able to, are they going to be allowed to be part of that program as like a second job? Not, you know, if they, on their day off, if they want to be a bailiff, is that allowable?
No.
By union, or by...
I think that the HR director can address that, but I don't think they would be eligible for that, and that is definitely not our plan.
And I'm just...
I was going to say, if they work that, because they're still part of the Grand Travis County, we would then have to pay them overtime, defeating the purpose of hiring the bailiff program, so we're not paying that overtime.
Okay, so we can't, like, they can't be considered, this is their day off, it's a second job?
No, because they work for Grand Travis County, they would be paid overtime, and that's why we're starting this, is that we're not paying all of that overtime.
Thank you.
All right, my turn finally? All right. District Court is, covers which counties?
Grand Travis, Lillaw, and Antrim.
Okay. And then, as part of that agreement, we provide, we're providing bailiffs to those courts?
No.
No.
That's done individually by Lillaw and Antrim County.
Okay.
They have their own bailiff's program.
Okay.
We do not. The bailiff's would serve only the building next door.
Okay. All right. So, all this talk about bailiffs at the district court, I have heard no mention of bailiffs at the circuit court? Is there a separate program going on?
No.
Or is that the next ask we're going to get?
Well, I don't know. Historically, I'm told that the circuit court was not interested in bailiffs, thinking, I believe, that they would be lesser-class officers than corrections officers, and not be able to provide the services. I don't know that to be true, because 80% of the bailiff's duties are in the Hall of Justice. We figured, let's just look at this building and see if we can take care of this here. There's plenty of opportunities there to keep a bailiff busy. If they're working a half a day for four hours a day, like I said, they could be in this courtroom for a couple hours, and then maybe move to a different courtroom for another two hours.
Okay, so, we will continue to have jail correction officers at the circuit court acting as bailiffs?
Correct.
Okay.
We would need more money if we expanded it to there, and...
Well, I thought this was a cost-savings program.
Well...
It will be, and I did speak with Judge Elsenheimer and Judge Power about this, and they are interested in seeing the results of this period of time, but they, their main concern is having able-bodied, competent bailiffs. They are not opposed to the concept of moving from corrections officers to bailiffs.
Okay, so, I guess what I see of this program is, we're going from using, basically, overtime at time and a half, full-time, regular employees, using part-time, regular-time-pay employees, so it should be a lesser cost. However, we're increasing services, which brings it to about even. Is that, is that, that's not accurate? Feel free to jump in.
No, we're not, yes, the cost, you know, to pay an officer to be in court on regular time is considerably more than a bailiff, just on the regular time, if they're there. So we're saving money there. And if we have to have officers working on overtime, and a couple of those officers have to be in court, that cost escalates, and the bailiff cost is much, is much less. So, we are, what we're trying to do with the program is to cover all our bases we currently cover with bailiffs in the Hall of Justice, okay? And because the courts are requesting some more, this will also cover their additional requests.
So we're adding the equivalent of 2.5 FTE to the district court?
Yes.
Are we taking away 2.5 from the jails?
No. Two people would be in the family in probate court, and three people, three bailiffs for the district court. That's what they have figured out they need to cover their requirements, so you would have two people. Now, again, two people wouldn't be assigned to the probate court, it's a matter of scheduling. Like I said, there may be days, there's only two bailiffs over in the building, and they may spend four hours in the probate court, the other may spend, the courts upstairs over there. With this program, depending on the scheduling, it's something that they can go from courtroom to courtroom. It's not like you are assigned to this court for four hours, you are assigned to this court for four hours. If you only did two hours here and two hours there, one person can cover two hours and two hours.
How many FTE equivalents are currently assigned to that courthouse?
None. It's on a day-to-day basis.
Well, okay, how many?
It depends.
How many are they using?
I'm sorry?
How many are they using?
Well, it depends. They're not assigned there, they're there when needed. I mentioned previously, there may be four corrections officers in that building in four different court settings. Not all day long, they may be there for an hour, or two, or four, depending on the schedule. On other days, and Sergeant Scott can speak to this, or Carol Stocking, maybe one could cover it.
Any records, or even an estimate of how many FTEs it costs us from the jail to have to be able to provide bailiffs?
We don't track their time necessarily, and how much time they spend in courts. Sergeant Scott could address that, I believe we started in 2019, trying to track their time in that building, so we get a better idea. We will know with this program exactly how much time they are spending over there. So, I think Stocking has something to comment on.
I have something I wanted to say. So, and I think Sergeant Scott does as well. Couple of things that I think might be confusing you, Chairman Henchel, is that, what, your questions cannot be answered as cleanly as I think that you'd like them to be, because one of the, this 2.5 FTEs is really five halftime bodies, that aren't, you can't compare them to two 2.5 FTEs in the jail, because these 2.5 will only be paid wages at a much lower rate, and then the on-call or part-time benefits, which are really just workers' comp and, you know, FICA. The 2.5 FTEs in the jail come with a much larger, higher pay scale, and then all of the benefits. So, that is, first of all, not comparable, so that's one thing. The other... The other is that the program that we're presenting is going to put bailiffs in courts where we've never had one. Magistrate Rogers never has a bailiff in her courtroom. Family Court, they only get a bailiff when they anticipate a problem case, and they call and they get one scheduled. This program is going to put a bailiff in those courtrooms always. And so, even with that, though, it's going to be a cost savings. But I think that the 12-month trial period is important, too, because one of the things we debated in our meetings as we talked about this is, we can't really, we don't have the data to provide to you, to show you that it's a cost savings. So, I think this 12-month period, we are going to be able to gather that data, and we'll demonstrate a year from now that it definitely was a cost savings. So, that's what I think is important, because we just don't have it. Logically, as Nate even said, it's going to be a cost savings. How much, how this is going to all work out, we don't know, but the math is the math. It's got to, it doesn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense that it's a big cost savings.
Okay.
May I try to address your question as well?
Sure.
So, if you look at the sheriff's responsibilities as a pie, the bailiff program, they have to currently provide bailiff services, to your point. And what that number is, the sheriff can't say that right now, but they have to do it by law. What the sheriff and the courts have found is they're saying, we are going to provide that service and more service, and we believe that that is going to cost the county less than what it's currently costing the county. So, the head count for the sheriff's office is not going to be impacted. He is not, but their funding mechanism, in part, is driven by a reduction in overtime. The hypothesis here is that that reduction in overtime is going to be equal to the cost of the bailiff program. We would like to see that. It's a, we would just like, would like to make sure that that is the fact before we put together a 2021 budget.
It, I guess it just seems to me, if we are increasing staff, 2.5 over here, we're increasing services, but it's a service we already provide, so, say we provide 0.5 FTE currently, and we increase it by two, wouldn't you then take the 0.5 out of the jail?
If you believe that that is a dollar, yes, one point to point, but the sheriff will tell you that he is already understaffed, and he has studies that say we need even more staff than what our current staffing plan allows, so.
So, are we, by nature of that, increasing the staffing plan in the jail, by leaving it the same?
Yep.
Okay.
To a degree. But his FTEs are not going to go up.
Right.
The services are going to be provided by a 2.5 FTEs comprised of part-time people.
Another question I had is retirement conflict. Earlier this year, I believe it was Wayne County was in the paper for how, it was about like, I think it was a million-dollar fine to the IRS for hiring retired employees in violation of a state law, or an IRS regulation, actually it was. Are, are we covered on that base? I know we've been aware of that situation in the past.
We, we have talked, Donna and I have talked about that at length, and we're making sure that those employees do not go above a certain number of hours, because once they do that, there are.
If they become full-time.
That's correct.
Now, we've got to start paying extra tax penalties or?
The number of hours is important, and it has to be managed. So, somebody, either in the sheriff's office or in the courts, has to be on top of that to make sure that those hours are not surpassed.
So, we have, we're, we're looking for five part-time positions. If three of them get sick and one's on vacation, would that put us in the position of being in violation of that IRS rule?
Well, my understanding of the rule is only if those employees go above the allotted number of hours that they can work. So, in order to have five full, or part-time people, you may have to have a pool of 15 to cover. So, that's kind of what they're looking at. Now, what I heard was a number of 22 potential applicants. You may have 10 in that group that can split those 2.5 FTEs.
Is that the, is that the program? Is this more like an Uber pool of bailiffs that you just call the next one available?
No.
Okay.
We would, we have, the funding is available, or what we believe to be available, to have part-time employees over there. And we're starting with five. Now, if we have six or seven, the dollar figure stays the same. It's just one piece of pie broken up into more pieces, okay? Some people may say, hey, I can only work 12 hours a week. Some may say, I can only work two hours a week. But we're looking for people that are, that want a halftime job, because it's less people to train and equip, and we're not looking for somebody to work four hours a year. Okay? So, we're looking for people who are available, and this is new. Like I said, we have 22 applicants. We think we can find five to get this going and see how it works. People are going to want some vacation time, and depending on the court's scheduling, five people may, may be able to handle it. But it kind of depends on the scheduling that the courts provide for us, so that these, these officers are busy four hours a day. Whether it's two or four, depending on the day, they have four-hour blocks of time they will be working.
Okay, so, these, these positions are not guaranteed 20 hours?
No.
And how big of a pool do you foresee having for these 2.5 FTEs, up to 20 hours each?
Well, for 2.5 FTEs, that's five people, okay, at 20 hours a week.
Yeah.
Five hours, or five people, 20 hours a week equals 2.5 people at 40 hours a week. So, we're starting with five.
Okay, but, okay, but we're talking about covering 100 hours a week in the court. If you've got one guy that's out sick, how are you going to cover it without going over 20?
We don't know that there's going to be 20 or 100 hours per week, depending on the scheduling, depending on the court's scheduling.
Okay. How many hours, I mean, if we looked at historic data, how many hours of in-court, in-session there should be a bailiff present or could be?
We have no idea. Yeah. We have no idea. That, this gives us an opportunity to get to a point where we can actually.
You're telling me we don't know how many hours a week that we have court in session?
Well, court in session and a bailiff present are two different things.
Okay.
Okay?
So, the other, to add on to that, too, is, so, we have court every morning, in two courtrooms, and oftentimes, three courtrooms every morning. But afternoons are tricky, because we have trials scheduled every afternoon, but many of them, if not most of them, go away. So, we have to have a bailiff scheduled and a, but, but we would call them off. So, I don't.
Well, how many hours of court recorders do we have?
We have full-time court recorders, but they do other things than sit in the courtroom. Yeah, so, so that's not, so, so I can tell you, we're in court four hours every morning of every week, times three judges, I mean, two mag, the two judges and the magistrate. But the afternoons are trickier.
Okay.
I think it's fair to say that because we have the availability of 100 hours per week in the courts, it may not be needed.
Probably won't be needed, so five would be okay, and you don't risk going over and violating the IRS rule about retirees.
Right.
That was my concern.
Ms. Kinsey is all over that.
All right.
And, and tracking the hours, so we don't make those, any of those violations. We're aware of that.
Okay. Qualifications, you mentioned possibly having them complete the physical test, could we?
Our corrections officers have a requirement to pass a physical maintenance test. And we're looking at the same standards for the bailiffs.
Okay. Is that the intention, that they will be required to pass that test?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we don't want somebody 92-wheelchair and oxygen. They need to perform duties, and.
I'm just looking for a yes, that's going to happen, that's.
Yes, that's fine.
Feel good about that, all right. And then, these, will these be sheriff's office employee or court employees?
Sheriff's office.
Okay. I've been writing questions this whole time, and it's been a while. Is this how most courts handle this? I mean, or you, you mentioned other courts have sheriffs, actually deputies in?
Oh, I'm sure they do, I don't have those numbers, but.
We don't know, other than?
Yeah, I don't know what Benzy does, I don't know what Van Buren County does, whether they have bailiffs or they have corrections officers.
Okay. And in hiring choices, do, if you're hiring someone retired from Grand Chevres County, does their service record or employee record at Grand Chevres County, prior to retirement, affect whether they're eligible or whether they'll be hired?
Yes.
Okay.
And wherever they've worked.
Okay. I'm good. Do you guys want to take a short recess, or you want to keep going on this?
I've got two short questions.
All right.
I've got one, so.
All right, we'll just, we'll go right, I did have Bryce next, so we'll just go right on down the line, give her one more shot, and then hopefully we'll be ready to vote.
Looks like half the funds are coming from this Michigan Indigenous Defense Council or Commission. Are we confident that this is an appropriate use for such funds?
Well, it's, it's, so, it's technically, the funds are not for the, for the bailiff program, it is to cover the cost of a corrections officer, which then frees up money.
Okay.
To be used for the, for the bailiff. So, the correction officer, the funds go to making sure we carry out the standards in our compliance plan.
Right.
And so, if it's a civil case, then we can't use MIDC funds.
All right.
But this, what it does is, using the MIDC funds for correction officer frees up funds that that can be used for the bailiff program.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Are there any entities out there that provide bailiff services for, like, subcontract to them, or not? You know, just kind of like home healthcare, the health department?
Yeah, I'm not sure of that right now, like, a private security company, very possible, but I don't know that answer.
Okay, I just thought that might be another way to go about it without having more employees, but, and then the other question is on the tracking of hours, since they will be a sheriff's employee, is it safe to assume that we'll actually be able to have documentation to track these hours, when we have no documentation now on how much time people actually spend in the courts?
Yes, we will, we will track their time in a few categories, so we can report back whether that happens to be in which court they're in, whether they're in the family court or the district court. We'll be able to simply track those hours on how much time they spend over there with a, with a activity report, very simple.
Okay, and then, I guess, since this is a 12, 12-month kind of trial basis, from what the conversation's been, can we maybe see some of the numbers after like three months to see?
Sure.
Kind of how it's going or something?
Sure.
So, okay.
We'll put in a plan that tracks our hours, which, which, which court they're in.
Okay. Yeah, I would just like to see how many hours we're actually putting into it, you know, and.
Yep.
I think we could actually put some cost savings numbers, or even actual what it's costing us to have them there, if we actually seen the hours being put in, so.
Sure.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Again, we think there's going to be a savings in overtime, but our overtime is solely dependent on whether or not we're fully staffed on the schedule.
Well, we're predicting the unknown there, when we're talking about overtime.
Yes.
You don't know how many people are going to be on vacation, or something happened, and so that's kind of a moot point in my eyes, you know, so.
But this will take any court responsibilities.
Okay, thanks, Sheriff.
Commissioner Caffia.
I do.
You good? Wish her luck.
Well, I think the biggest thing for me is the, in addition, obviously, the safety of the issues, both the jail and in the courts, but it will, once and for all, give us an opportunity to track what our time commitment and our costs are to provide that service. We've never, we've never even come close to tracking that. The sheriff made reference to the recommended 2020 budget. I'm guessing that's his requested 2020 budget, seeing as I haven't, I haven't seen any budget request yet for 2020, so. This, this, like every other service that's provided by the county, is subject to financial review every year. So, whether, whether we sit here and we talk about a 12-month trial period or whatever, if when we're drawing the 2021 budget, we deem that it's not appropriate, or we're not getting our bang for the buck, we have the opportunity to eliminate that service. But, the nice thing about this is we're at least going to have a very concrete way of tracking how many hours we're spending and how many dollars we're spending, and that's, that's kind of an unusual thing for us, because we provide hundreds of services in this, in this county, all of them come with a cost, and unfortunately, very rarely do we have the opportunity to figure out how many, how much that particular service costs and how many people are served. This will absolutely have concrete numbers for it, which is really kind of a great idea.
Commissioner LaPointe.
I like to think it's true, but it's not, and I, I know where Mr. Henshaw was going. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison. We'll have more bailiff time going into the future than we have now, so you're not going to be able to compare that, and just come up with an overtime number and say, overtime's been reduced by so much due to this program. I don't think, I don't think you'll really come up with anything. It just, it's just from a common, my standpoint, from a common sense standpoint, if I can have people in there, qualified people in the range of $20 an hour versus 30, plus time and a half, plus benefits, you know, it's, what's there to decide? And clearly, we need, based upon the, what we know goes on these courts and the types of people that are, are in our court, our courtrooms, we need more of a presence of qualified security in the courts, so it's, it's an additional service, so. I don't, it's, it's, my mind, it's, it's, like I said before, it's a no-brainer. As far as calling it a trial or a pilot, I don't think it's really necessary to call it that. You'd start the program, and if the sheriff and the courts decide it's not working, you suspend it. And if you're going to call it a pilot for one year, if you're trying to hire people, they say, wait, but this is a pilot, you want me to go through this training for one year's timeframe, this thing may go away? I would, my opinion, just drop that from the description, put the program into place, like we do so many other programs, some work, some don't, and if it, if it's successful, continue on, give us the feedback, and, and proceed that way. So, I'll certainly support this as a, as a continued, a new philosophy in terms of providing bailiff services.
So, may I address that point? My only concern is that, my position on this is, the cost of providing bailiff services is going to go down. You're going to have any number of people providing 2.5 FTEs worth of work for the, for the court. If that is recognized and something happens, the cost of bailiff services is going to go back up. The staffing levels are not going to change by the sheriff's office, so if the sheriff comes back in 2020 and says this isn't working, there's going to be an increase in his budget request, and you, this board is going to have to review that and ultimately approve that. So, that is my only concern surrounding having an official program, and the sheriff abandoning the concept of having bailiffs provide that, or corrections officers provide that service to the courts. The service has to exist, the courts mandate it. So, we're going to recognize cost savings, and then potentially, that could go back up. So, there, there could be a budgetary impact.
But it is a, staffing levels are going to go up, because we're hiring for this program.
The, the staffing levels will go up by the part-time FTEs, but the cost is being purported to you not to increase overall, in the sheriff's budget.
But the staffing plan will have to be amended. Yes.
That's why I was saying.
To put it in, in context, the correction officers, the, or that budget for the jails, 4.5 million. And I don't know what the courts are, I mean, this is, what's more than that? A rounding number in that, in those budgets.
Yeah, the corrections budget is 6 million. It's a big, it's a big budget.
Okay. Commissioner Caffia?
Thank you. Just for point of clarification, whether we call it a pilot or not, I appreciate the point there, but it sounds like there will be tracking of, of how this program is proceeding, and I'd just like to identify who is taking lead, who's the lead on that tracking piece, who's going to then be following that and reporting it back to us, so that we just have some continuity? Who, is it the courts? Is it your department? Is it the other sheriff?
No, it'll be our department. Our department.
Okay, and are we, Mr. Jewett mentioned quarterly, it sounded like, every three months, or at least?
I don't think we need, myself, I don't think we need to report every 30 days, but I think every.
Oh, no, I said three months.
Yeah, well, but, you know, every quarter, I think that's more insufficient, especially as we see it take off and getting implemented, so.
Yeah.
I mean, is that sufficient for you, Sheriff, for every quarter?
Sure.
Yeah, I've just been at lots of planning meetings. Yeah, I've just been at lots of planning meetings in other realms where everybody agrees a thing needs to happen, but nobody has identified as who's going to take the lead on following that along, and so I just want to make sure that I'm clear it's coming from your department.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I will, I just want to echo Commissioner Wheelock's statement of gratitude for staff. A lot of moving parts in this project, and I want to just commend staff for getting it together. A lot of strong personalities, many of them elected, and that can be kind of difficult to navigate sometimes, but I want to, I want to thank staff for putting this proposal together. I'm going to support it. I'm, I would just say I'm surprised that we don't know how many hours a year we're in session, in court, in session. It seems like, you know, a bookstore knowing how many books it sells. It just, it seems like we'd have that number, but I do support it. I think you've all done a great job. Can we vote? Let's vote. Motion on the floor. Roll call, vote please.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Hundley?
Yes.
Kofia?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. I think we're due for a little break. Let's take a small recess. Staff, you want to tee this off?
Yes, sure. This is, this is to help you implement one of the 2019 board identified goals was to give you a criteria and timeframe when you would review the dedicated millage and the special surcharge, which is the 911 surcharge. So, I, I don't think I need to say anything beyond that. It's a pretty, I think, simple, straightforward, easy-to-file document, but be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have questions or a motion to approve? Commissioner LaPointe.
Just a, a question. I, I agree with this, and we had talked about this, and it's a good policy. The only thing is, and perhaps it's, it can't go in here, it's not appropriate to go in here, is we do do a millage, some say here is the millage rate, period, and it's locked in. Some say not to exceed. When you're putting a millage together, I've always found this an issue, when you're putting a millage together, you're taking a guess what, what you're going to need, what the, you know, what the revenue's going to be. And I would like to see, or consideration may be at another date, is that have a policy that all millages that the board recommends states a not-to-exceed amount. So that, should we see a situation like Department Veterans Affairs, we are funding that at a level way beyond that it's needed, and since it was dedicated, those monies couldn't be moved anyplace else, so. Just for, I'll just throw it in as a comment. I don't think it necessarily applies to
We, we do have a, to address that, we do have a separate policy that was developed about four or five years ago that talks about when, when dedicated millage proposals are being drafted. So, that is something that we could amend that policy at a later date to address your concern.
Could you send me a copy of that?
Yes.
And just take a look at it, and then I'll follow up and bring it up in appropriate, at a, a future date.
Okay, so relating to this policy, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Moved by LaPointe, supported by Jewitt. Discussion. All right, I'll, I'll take a vote then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are on to item 9B2, Transitional Employee, page 108 in the packet.
Thank you. Whether you know or not, Mrs. Kramer in our office is looking down the road at potentially leaving employment with Grand Chevres County. Not potentially, she will be leaving. She just does not have a solid date yet, but she has given us a range. In that range, I have a little bit of discomfort knowing that we don't have somebody to pick up her job if, if, when she leaves. So, I'm hoping to have a transitional employee, hire one now that can work with Chris between now and the time she leaves, to just get the historical perspective of what her job is so that we can maintain the level of service that we are providing currently. It's probably going to be early 2020 that she leaves, and I just want to get the ball rolling now.
Okay. Questions or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Okay, moved by LaPointe, supported by Wheelock. Discussion. Commissioner Kofia.
Just, I certainly appreciate and acknowledge that nearly 20 years of experience is difficult to replace. It's a lot of institutional wisdom and, and service, which is appreciated, and that it, it, I appreciate the administration looking ahead and thinking about how best to, to smooth that transition and transfer as much of that longstanding knowledge as possible. So, thanks to Mrs. Kramer, and, and I certainly support this prudent.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
Will miss her.
Just, just a
Commissioner Wheelock.
Very quick comment. I think, you know, I think what we have, this community has benefited from is the fact that our administration is pretty bare bones, you know, and it has been for a long time. You know, it was, it was bigger when I first got here than it is now. And, you know, but, but that being said, you know, it's, it's pretty bare bones, and it's not like if, you know, if Chris is gone, Sarah can pick up all of that slack. We just don't have the people. So, as we try to train someone to, to fill some of those shoes, you know, it makes sense to bring them in now. You know, I, it's always tough to have someone hit the, come in the door and think they're going to hit the door running because they're not going to.
Yep. Did we first have computers when you got here, Slade?
What's that? We had, we had shizzles and stones. Stone tablets and hammers.
It's getting late. Can we take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're on item 10, Unfinished Business, A Distribution of 2% Allocation of Tribal Funding. Commissioner Hundley, page 110 in the packet.
It's actually page 112, isn't it?
Yeah, I was going to say, there's nothing in 110 about that.
Oh, I, I don't have anything packet-related. It really was just, I'm aware that the, the next funding deadline for the band is coming up in November, and since earlier in the year, we had, I believe the vote was to instruct administration to reach out to the band and kind of reopen the, the process, you know, or the question about what the process for applying would be. And I just wanted to get it on the agenda early enough to say, to, to give any area nonprofits or anybody else who might be applying for such funds, do notice that if we aren't, if we aren't changing anything in, in the November deadline, and, and we would still accept applications, fine, and if not, that we give everybody advanced warning. And so I wanted to get it on the, the agenda today so we could, like, get an update.
Do you have a status update?
The, the letter went out to the band's council, John Petasky, on August 12th. We have not gotten a response.
I'll, if you don't mind, I'll just update. I had some conversations with Commissioner Wheelock after that meeting, and I took another look at the consent decree, and what I, I found what he was talking about was several pages before. It talks about all this 2% allocation and whatnot, and what I found is a paragraph that basically says, so this is in effect so long as tri, the tribes are the only ones that have casinos in Michigan. Well, we all know the state of Michigan now owns casinos. And so, it's basically, the whole document is, is down the tubes until the state of Michigan and the tribes come to a, a new agreement, if that's going to happen. But basically, it, it changed my view to, to, to discover that, that this is completely at their own volition because that document is null and void by the state of Michigan putting casinos in the state. So, this is, as they say, this is purely their program, which raises the question to me, which I agree with Commissioner Wheelock once again, that why are we even involved? If this is their grant program where they want to give funds to the community, why, why are, why is it going through us? It's, you know, it's something we apply for, for our programs, you know, the sheriff's department, the courts, you know, they apply for those funds. Why are we also submitting, you know, why are we giving the, our stamp of approval to other organizations to compete for funds that we are also applying for? A lot of moving parts. It didn't, didn't really make sense to me, so. My opinion, my, my view has changed on the, what's, was proper, and also my opinion on, you know, I still agree we shouldn't be involved in this, so, but for a different reason now.
Well, I mean, so I guess I'll, I'll ask Mr. Alger.
So, staff needs direction about what the
So staff needs direction about what to put on the website.
Right.
Essentially, the people who have historically applied for these, um, these funds just need to know what the process is, and we need to know how to, you know, process those requests if those requests come in. So what we have is a current grant agreement, or a grant policy that is in the, is in the packet, that does, um, describe how departments and elected officials within the county can apply for and receive grants, it does not talk about nonprofits, but, uh, scenario could be that if, I'm gonna use the CAC because that is something that I'm familiar with, um, they provide a service that is, in my opinion, invaluable to Grand Tverres County, um, for the prosecutor's office, the department of law enforcement, courts, all the way through...
CAC being?
Child, they, thank you, acronyms.
Children's Advocacy Center, I'm always gonna do that.
Um, they provide a service that is invaluable, so they could potentially ask the sheriff to apply for a grant to the tribe to fund that programming, uh, versus the CAC, Child Advocacy Center, applying for those funds directly. We just need direction.
Yep.
Um, I think if I, I don't recall exactly what happened with the voting, but the request to do it the way we've always done it, that failed, uh, on a vote, so we are in a little bit of limbo, um, in terms of how do we take, how do we deal with that?
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Kofia?
Yeah.
Were you next?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so, that is a great example, uh, Administrator Alger, the Children's Advocacy Center critically important, child sexual abuse investigation, working with families, super important, needed in our community unfortunately, and what you just described, if Children's Advocacy Center is then put in the position, and I appreciate the nuance of this, and, and that it's a, it's a question, what we do here, what's the right thing to do, but if we switch things from what's happening now, where Children's Advocacy Center is paying ostensibly a staff member of their nonprofit, a grant writer, to write the grant up, and they instead need to shift over to the sheriff's department and ask the sheriff's department to come up with the grant, is that then shifting and taking time from our staff to come up? It's a lot of work, if you talk to any grant writer, to do the process that it takes to get, to have it match all the specifications, and so that's a factor I think we should think about, and then, um, I absolutely appreciate Commissioner Hundley's foresight here so that we, whatever we decide, we can be a good neighbor and a good partner to the, the many nonprofits that are doing really important work in this community, Children's Advocacy Center, Conflict Resolution Services, which keeps lots and lots of cases out of our courtrooms, et cetera. Um, the sooner we can get clarity to staff and to ourselves as a board, the sooner that can then be extended to all of these nonprofits that do this critical work, because he's right, the, the funding cycles are, you know, it's almost upon us, and they're going to need to know whether they should do the work to apply, or if Grand Tverres County is no longer going to facilitate that, which we have done for I don't know how many years. So, yes, thank you for bringing this up, um, and then to Chairman Henchel's, um, point about, and I appreciate, you know, you looking and kind of taking due diligence on, as to what the consent decree says, but I'm not an attorney, and so you and I might look at the same document and come up with somewhat different interpretations, it's happened before, and, um, on different matters, so I don't know if, if that's, if, if we should just be out of this business entirely, I don't know that from looking at the consent decree, decree, so, yes, we need to get clarity on this for ourselves, for staff, and certainly for the community, and, and for our relationship with a sovereign nation, which does, um, partner with us on many other aspects, so, just, yes, it's important, and I think we should probably give some clear direction, and get, probably first figure out what that direction needs to be as a body.
Commissioner Wheelock?
I think what I would do is put commissioners on notice that I will have in your packet for your October meeting, a, a motion resolution that Grand Tverres County will support 2% grants to the Grand Tverres Band of Ottawa and Chipo and Indians specifically for services provided by or for Grand Tverres County. That will give us the opportunity, you know, and it's, you know, I'm just, I'm gonna have to rattle it around in my head a little bit before we get to it, but that, that will allow us to apply for money for services that we provide, it would give us the opportunity for the prosecutor's office to say, "We need the Child Advocacy Center, so we, we want to support X number of dollars for them," but specifically for services provided by or for Grand Tverres County.
Would you like to make that motion now? I thought you worded it perfectly.
Okay, I will, I will make the motion that Grand Tverres County only support 2% grants for services provided by or for Grand Tverres County as an entity.
Okay. Okay, moved by Wheelock, supported by Klaus, further discussion? Commissioner Lapointe?
I'll oppose that, um, the current policy, or the current practice, I should say, of accepting on behalf of NGOs not affiliated with the county has gone on forever. Uh, it's not, that whole issue of the consent decree and what you had mentioned is not gonna be resolved in the foreseeable future, so to say, "Let's wait until we get a ruling," is just a, an absolute waste of time. Having the county submit grant requests, uh, or allowing others to submit grant requests, which they've done in the past, doesn't preclude the county, if the sheriff wants to do one, or the, any other department wants to do one, doesn't preclude it, and I've often asked the question, when I was a trustee in ACME, and things were being submitted through ACME Township, I asked, "Well, if we submit this one is coming from ACME, is that gonna, is that gonna, uh, endanger or impact negatively some other requests that the township was?" And the answer is, no, as far as anyone's able to determine, they don't look at it and say, "Well, if the county is submitting these, then we have these other entities within the county, and therefore, you know, we're only gonna get with so much money here or there, or whatever," so, um, I, I think all we're gonna be doing is penalizing NGOs in Grand Tverres County to the benefit of these organizations in other counties. They say, "Hey, we, we didn't receive anything from Grand Tverres County, there's something about X amount of money, and it'll go to Benzi or many of these other counties," so for that reason, um, I wish that the, uh, ruling or the law was different and was clearer as the way it was supposed to be sub, but they're not playing by the rules, and we can just sit there and for moral principles say, "Well, we're, uh, we're going to go a different route," but all we're doing is penalizing very worthy causes, uh, that had submitted a request the last time. I mean, we could, the county can still submit their, their own requests, the sheriff can, the courts can, health department can, so, as long as, as long as, as long as everyone else is playing by a different set of rules, I'd rather play with those rules and do it ourselves, just to spite ourselves.
Commissioner Jewitt?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to postpone or table that motion of Commissioner Wheelock's until next meeting, just so we can have time to digest everything, look at it.
Okay, I have a motion to postpone the vote.
Support. Support.
Moved by Jewitt, supported by Kofia, to postpone to the next meeting, uh, we'll take a roll call vote.
Yes.
Kofia? Yes. Lapointe?
Yes.
Klaus?
No.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Henchel?
No. Okay, motion carries, we will take that up at our next agenda. All right, our next, uh, next agenda, what?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, does staff feel clarity around what, what they're going to be expected to bring back to us at the next meeting, 'cause that feels important.
We'll work on it, okay. So I, I just wanna be clear of the chronology here, we, this board, uh, made, somebody made a motion to process the request the way we always have, that was currently on our website. That motion failed.
Back in May or June or whatever.
On August 7th, actually.
Oh.
There was five members present.
I wasn't here, okay.
The motion failed, so we do not have current guidance from the board on how to manage this, so, um, that is the issue we're facing, is that we have a current grant policy that ma, that manages and addresses how we submit and receive grants. That grant policy is in your packet, given, not given, direction, we will process these grants as directed by our policy. Okay? That, that's all I, I don't know of any other direction beyond that, so until next meeting...
I mean, I, I think we're early enough that that will, I think, be okay, that gets us to October 1st.
Second.
Second, so, but, but the, it seems to me that, the, what, what happens if we go the route of getting out of the business of forwarding, so, so, two things, one is, I, I have gleaned, um, that while, yes, the departments, the counties still can apply and still do, effectively, the county never wins the, the selection process, I don't know, never, but, but, but typically doesn't, and, and so they tended to be weighted toward the nonprofits, which then is, you know, is, is a thing, and I, and I, I get that, it's a concern, I, I tend to share, Commissioner Lapointe's, the point of view that, that all we ultimately do is, is hurt some NGOs, but, but what I think will end up happening is you'll have the CAC, or before, during, after incarceration, whatever, they'll say, "Okay, well, we can't apply through Grand Tverres County, but we'll apply through Garfield Township, maybe," but then the question is, does that mean their, their grant can only benefit Grant, uh, Garfield Township residents, right? And so we, we're, we really are harming these programs, so it, I don't know, I don't know if October 2nd is too late to give you guidance.
Good questions to come back.
Can I, can I offer that, um, it sounds like there are some very good questions and perspectives among all of us, and it, would it help staff if we got you the questions that we're, we need answers to in order to make a decision? If we could get that to you, you know, then you can come and say, "Here's what you wanted to know, and here's, here's what we know," and then we can make a decision on that. It's either that or a study session and have a whole big hash out, which has been discussed, but...
I'm sorry, just like Bryce's comment about, you seem, you implied there's favoritism given to non-government agencies, that, that's, having looked at, look, go back and look at the grants, I mean, they've given some huge grants, fire trucks, uh, fire state, I mean...
That's fair.
So it's, don't jump to that.
No, that's fair, I think I've just kind of picked it up in, in buzz in the room kind of thing, so I, I'm, it's not really based on, on data, so, that's fair, thanks.
You know, while we're on the topic of grants, um, looking at this policy, as chair of this board, there's some grants, like with the state and law enforcement type grants, that require the chair of the board to basically sign off that it's okay to, that we're applying for this, and I've gotten a couple so far this year, um, but what I see in this grant policy is that, uh, says "may be submitted with notification to the administrator and finance director," and when I get these in my inbox, I go talk to Nate about it, and, you know, "What is this grant?" "I don't know, nobody's talked to me about it." So I think we have some policies that aren't being followed, because they're coming straight to me without notifying, uh, the administrator that they're applying, so I just wanted you to be aware of that, and I'm going to direct them to do that and follow this policy, um, and granted, it's, it's an application, and if it doesn't obligate the county, I'm comfortable with saying, "Yeah, go ahead and apply," but I think we need to keep the administrator in the loop and the finance director, so, just, just so you're aware that that's going on. Uh, that said, let's move on to item 10B, ethics policy, Commissioner Jewitt.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, uh, approximately six months ago, we formed the ad hoc committee for the ethics, um, there was three of us commissioners, um, human resources was not there in the beginning, but was there, propelled us, what, four sessions maybe, or something like that?
Three, maybe?
Three, four sessions, and legal counsel's also been there. Um, the committee was dissolved, but with, with, with it being dissolved, there were some good ideas and everything, that, um, the policy may need to be looked at and updated again and everything, even though we did approve it back in June or July and stuff, but, um, so anyway, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to have human resources go over the current ethics policy, and make sure it is, uh, suitable, and what's in there pertains, and if not, beef it up where it needs to be beefed up, and, um, send it back to us for consideration.
Okay, so we have a motion to instruct staff to, uh, review the commissioner's ethics policy, and bring back any recommended changes.
Correct.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll support that for discussion.
Okay, supported by Commissioner Klaus, discussion. Commissioner Klaus?
The, uh, when we started this, uh, the ad hoc committee, it was, uh, directed at a, at the board, and we didn't realize, uh, when we were sitting here, that HR had already started going through all of the policies, um, that they'd started that well before we brought it up at the board for the, the ethics policy. HR, I think, did a fine job, uh, they're, they put everything together, um, to keep us out of future litigation, and I don't, I don't believe that we need to instruct staff to instruct HR to do their job, because I think that HR will do their job properly without special instruction, um, because that's, that's their job. There are, um, points that were made at the ad hoc committee that, uh, I think that if HR feels that those should be added, um, they should add them by their own, um, by doing their job, you know, if, if it's something that they feel they should review and go through it, um, so, I think that it should be just left in HR's department to take care of the all policies.
Okay. Um, I, at, at our last recess, I did talk to Bruce, who made a, I thought, a very effective public comment, he mentioned some good points about the policy, I asked him to email me his points, and I will, I'll be forwarding those on to staff to consider whether they think they're appropriate and bring back those, but, uh, there was a couple of issues from past boards, uh, you know, granted, I gotta say it again, this is a new board this year, five new faces on this board, um, but past boards did have commissioners, you know, committed some question, and so, you know, it might be beneficial to have a little bit of direction in, in that policy, I don't, I don't think we need a, like, a huge, in-depth policy, and I, I looked at some of the, uh, some of the agendas and discussion of the ethics committee, uh, and I, I thought some of them was going a little far, like, you really don't need my wife's personal financial statement, you know, I thought that was a little far, but I, I do see room for maybe some touch-ups, so, I think...
Ms. Kinsey and I have been in touch since the ethics ad hoc dissolved, and we'll be getting together probably next week, and we'll be working on something to, that she'll bring forward.
All right, any further discussion?
I think that it's important, and, and part of, um, the reason that we, well, I, I had originally asked for the study session on the ethics policy way back in January, if you all might remember, um, because of the question right out the gate about voting for a family member to receive a county appointment, um, but more broadly, past conflicts of interest around finances, et cetera, um, and I, I just think that, I appreciate the points that my colleagues who were on the ad hoc with me, um, make about wanting to have our HR be very involved, and in fact, as soon as we learned that HR was also working on reworking our policies, we invited her, and she attended every meeting after, I think, the first one, as did our civil council, um, but I think an important thing for us to just keep in mind, and, yeah, an important thing for us to keep in mind is that the county commissioners, there's a power dynamic at play.
Right.
When you are put in a position to try to write policy and potentially investigate the people who could get you fired, could fire you, that is a power dynamic that is incredibly important and is under-acknowledged, I think, in government among elected officials, and that is something that is very important to me to acknowledge as a, a voting member, a taxpayer, and now county commissioner, so whatever happens, I think that it's incumbent on us, and to be good leaders, um, to recognize and address that power dynamic, right? Because different, I will beat this drum to the end of time, I'm... Because different, I will beat this drum to the end of time, I'm, I'm never gonna get tired of pointing out the fact that many of these policies, including the Ethics Policy as currently written, any enforcement doesn't apply to elected officials. It says up to and including, basically, termination. That's not something Administrator Alger or our HR Director or any of our staff can do with us or any other elected official. And so I do think it's incumbent on us to look to other remedies proactively, not once a scandal, God forbid, hit, that we think ahead and, and provide good leadership. So I appreciate, we should rely on our professional Human Resources Director and Civil Counsel. We also have to take some ownership for the power dynamic that does exist in every situation where you have elected officials. So that's what I have to say.
All right. So we have a motion. Oh, go ahead.
Just to clarify with Kit, did you say that you guys are going to meet next week on this here?
That's our plan.
Yeah. Well, I'm just deciding if I want to withdraw my motion now, but I mean, is that the plan or is it actually on your calendar?
We don't have a time or date.
It's appropriate to have a motion, I think.
Okay, so I, I will leave my motion standing then.
Okay. Commissioner Hunley?
Sorry, thank you. Specific, I guess, to the motion on the floor with the issue of the Ethics Policy, is it, is it appropriate to direct the HR Director and Counsel to specifically address how the policy affects the, the Board of Commissioners? So that, so that, in other words, so that you guys go away feeling empowered to look at us and what, what are the good internal controls or whatever you would want to call it, the, the good systems in place for us, even acknowledging that, you know, the, the power dynamic that Commissioner Kofia, is it so that you're not feeling like, well, I'm not sure if we should touch that one or not? I'd like to give you guidance that you can.
My, my understanding of our current direction was that this should be put in the hands of HR to come forward with a policy that they feel is adequate and comprehensive. And so I'll be assisting her with that. From a legal perspective, I think there does need to be something in either the policy or in the Board rules which gives better, clearer direction to you about voting and when that shouldn't occur and when that can occur and what should take place if it does occur. So that's something that I will be talking to Donna about, having in there.
Okay. Commissioner Jewett?
So just to touch on what you said, Kit, you'll be talking to Donna in regards to deciding if it should be in policy or Board rules in regards to Commissioners?
Yeah, we would be talking about that. And if she does not want to bring a policy forward that has that, for whatever reason, and I don't want to speculate as to why or why not she might want, not want that in there. So if she would prefer to have a policy that doesn't address voting, then that would be something I would be recommending separately. But if she feels comfortable with it in the policy, then perhaps that'll be what she brings forward.
Okay.
All right. Is everybody clear on the motion?
No.
The motion is to instruct staff to, specifically, Human Resources and Legal Counsel to review our policy and to bring back any recommended changes. Okay?
Review which policy?
The Ethics Policy that pertains to Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Kofia?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Klaus?
No.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Jewett?
Yes.
Hunley?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on.
Would you like the results of the Board of Canvassers now under, under?
Sure, go ahead. We can slip that in here.
So the Democratic canvasser that was elected is Steve Horn, and the Republican canvasser elected was Linda Witt.
Okay. Congratulations, Steve Horn and Linda Witt. I'm sure you'll serve us well. We're on 11A of new business, Transparency Policy, Henchel. And I think the page numbers are off by one in the packet at this point, so it's page 114? Is that right? Or 115? 115, no. So the, yeah, slight discrepancy on the agenda page. Apologize for anyone who's having a hard time keeping up. So this is something, just a, a couple of things that some have been mentioned. It's been mentioned in public comment how our videos are only available for two years and then they're erased. I would like to see all of, everything we have available, available. The technology is such, you can go on YouTube and watch thousands of hours of videos. It doesn't cost much to have them available, if anything, you know, staff time to get them up there. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't have all of our stuff available to the public all the time. And that also goes for all of our past meeting minutes, past meeting packets, is, you know, I, I know one, one packet was mentioned to me that at one point had the schematics to the jail that is not supposed to be public because it's a security risk. Those are the kind of things we should probably keep out if it was a mistake in including it. But other than that, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't have all of our stuff from all of recorded history available for anyone who wants to go and look at what this Board has done over the last 50 years. Well, I think 1970 or '72, it became a commission versus a Board of Supervisors. So I know there's, w- once you get back into the, the pre-1970s, it, there's some expense involved because it was all handwritten, and we've got these non-standard sized, sized ledgers down in the, the vault that it's, it's gonna take something special to scan those and, and make those PDF available for any public. And so, and that's why I brought this for discussion. Before saying, yeah, go do it, I'd like to know what the cost is, so we were, you know, being diligent, not spending money frivolously. But I would like to see all of this stuff available to the public. And I guess I wanted to see what other Commissioners felt about that. Commissioner LaPointe?
When you say in, in cost, are you talking about outsourcing this?
I, yeah, my, my vision is absolutely to outsource scanning.
But if you outsource it, it's also gonna take staff working with the outsourcer. So if you're gonna do the, if you're gonna do a cost analysis, let's get the true cost. We're tied it like, I think.
You're short of.
Commissioner Wheelock had said, we're short on administrative staff, and if they're gonna be tied up going back forever. That's number one. The second thing is, you put down here past Board minutes. We have a bunch of Boards. Are you talking all Boards?
County Board of Commission.
You didn't say.
But, you know, it'd be nice, you know, to see what the airport did in 1990.
Okay, I'll shoot the lock, shoot the lock off, but I want the true, true cost of doing this.
Well, and it's, it's hard to get an actual cost because no contractor is gonna come and look at a, a stack of books and say, okay, I'll do this for $10,000. Because they, they could get into it and it could cost them 20. So the only way they can mitigate that risk is by charging you triple what they think it'll take and hope that they make a huge profit without losing money.
I anxiously await the proposal.
Okay. Commissioner Kofia?
Couple of points of clarification and then an idea. You're talking about basically from today back as far back as we can do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then a thought is that historical societies, genealogical societies, there are entities who do this sort of thing, essentially archiving, who I bet they could give us a perspective on what the time and potential cost. I don't know if they do it all volunteer or they actually hire somebody to do some of that work, but it might be a place to start to try to figure out what it's going to cost.
One of the issues I see currently is because our current meetings are being recorded, and they're being put on another organization's website. And we don't control how long it stays there necessarily. We, we know that they keep them there for about two years, and then they start disappearing. If that organization wants to change its plan or decide, oh, we're only gonna keep it one year now, you know, something like that.
Sure.
I mean, unless it's in a written agreement, or if that organization dissolves, you know, then all of a sudden, we don't have that available. So I would just like to see us be a little more on top of keeping the histories.
I, I think this is great. The questions I have about what we actually have, so, so the, the current videos of our meetings here, they go on the website, but the website is controlled by a vendor. And, I mean, we maintain some copy, we have a?
We have all of the videos of Board of Commissioner meetings. Mrs. Kramer told me that's about one terabyte of storage currently.
Oh, we'll, we'll keep on doing these four-hour meetings.
That will go up.
I was gonna double it.
But, but, um, okay, so, so we have them, they're just not, they don't stay up on the website.
That's correct.
And so there's not necessarily easy access for it.
Well, that, that's kind of true. I just, out of curiosity, just scrolled through the, the years. So we have, we have media, so we have meeting videos going back to 2014. So it's not, it's not necessarily two years. It's, goes back even longer than that. We have minutes going back to 2006. We have complete packets going back to, I think, 2012.
That are digital?
Digital, that you go on our website, they're there.
Okay. So, cause another, I guess I would throw out another possibility is not, not necessarily trying to scan back to the dawn of time if things aren't scanned, but, but trying, we could do a, a go-forward policy or a going forward from 2012 or whatever the, the earliest date would be, where we have the, the information and, you know, if it's already on the website and it stays on the website and we want to put that into the agreement to, to commit to it, that's one thing. Or alternatively, you know, i- if we wanted to make that readily available, either somewhere here in the building or at the library, you can go to the library and, and do all of the research on County Commissions you want. Those might be less.
Library doesn't have it.
No, but I'm saying, but we could, we could presumably.
Partner with the library?
Yeah, I mean, and I would think if, if the things are already in some kind of digital format that we can present to them and put it on a computer, that might be a lower cost of like.
I need the keeper of records.
Keeper of records.
I was gonna turn to you next.
Keeper of records. We have digital minutes, digitally saved from 1992 forward, correct?
Ninety-two?
Sarah's coming. 1992 forward, digitally. They're all in books. We go right from 1853 forward. I also found some really old microfilm that somebody is coming to look at because I don't even know if we can read it. The option, though, that, that I was thinking is I index everything, every, every set of minutes, every motion that was, that happened in a set of, at a meeting. And it's on the AS400, and I try to index it with like four or five different keywords so that somebody can find something. That's how I find things when you guys go, hey, I need this, and I find it. So if we could give people access, without being able to change it, to our AS400 index program, so then they'd say, well, I wanna know about the Boardman Dam. And then they would type in Boardman Dam, and they will see a lot of things. And they will even see what page and date those minutes, that, that it talks about those minutes. So it could kind of, what do I want to say? Get them focused on exactly where to start looking for what happened. But I, I'm not sure about all the packets. Do we know, how many packets?
So we would have to do a digital inventory, basically, of the files that we have. Most of the minutes that we do have scanned are in PDF format. However, they're not OCR, Optical Character Recognition, so you can't do a word search, you can't do a find on them. So we would have to do that. Some of the scans are a complete month, so it could be multiple meetings in one scan, or some scans are just one meeting. It's all over the board on what it's. We have some packets that are scanned, we have minutes that are scanned. It's not consistent. Yes, we can scan or convert the microfilm to hopefully a digital format, but when you're talking the Board of Supervisors, they were all handwritten. You can't turn that into a searchable format. So that person's gonna be flipping through it. And honestly, we haven't had requests to search back that far.
Yes, you have.
Well. One request.
One Commissioner.
One request. But, um, so can it be done? Sure. But is it, we don't know what the cost or the time is gonna be, what staff time is gonna be involved.
Yep, and that's why I brought this forward, is requesting staff to give us some options with what we could do and what the cost might be of those options. So are you comfortable with bringing something back, or do you want a motion to be more specific?
We can check it out, no problem.
I can tell you that I spoke with the Register of Deeds late last week, and she has gone through some proposals. And I had a recent bid of about $60,000 to bring her document imaging up to 1972.
Oh, wow.
So if we're talking.
Seventy-two forward or back?
To 1972 from historical.
The 1800s.
She already has seventy-two forward, so that, this would be her complete catalog.
Yes. So that was a $60,000 bid that came in for that.
Okay.
Big job for somebody.
The records are there. It's just somebody else to maybe come here to see them.
Well, I'll give you a specific example of, like, we started talking about the airport, and the city used to be a part-owner of the airport, and they broke off at some point. Well, just, I was at the NMC BBQ Flippin' Burgers next to Rothschild's, who was the County Administrator at that time, and I just mentioned, you know, this was going on at the airport, and he says, oh, yeah, we bought the airport, or we bought the city out of the airport. Wait, we paid? Okay, where's the minutes? What actually happened? And I got no way to find it because it's prior to what we have on the website. I would love to have a resource where when something like that comes up, you know, knowing the history affects my decisions. Because I, you know, I'm, I'm really big on keeping your word. And if we made a commitment at some point to, you know, any topic that comes up, any organization or, or government entity or tribal, whatever, knowing that history is big for me. It, it affects my decision, so.
Sorry, one more point.
Yeah.
Um, so with.
Did you say your name? I don't think people know who you are.
Sorry. Sarah Letts, I am the Chief Deputy for the Vital Records Division. In addition to scanning and converting all those records to digital, then we have to talk about storage costs within our website. Is that feasible? Does our web provider provide that? So there's multiple facets on the costs that are gonna be, and it's a lot of data.
Nah, not anymore.
Still a lot of data.
No, really. Storage, I mean, you talk about one terabyte of video, you know, it's, it's a $40 hard drive. That's, that's tiny. And could we hook that directly to our website? Yeah, I could do it from my home computer. I mean, it's, it's minuscule by today's technology standards. So anyways. All right, well, if you're, you can bring something back to us in the future.
Yes.
We're good.
Yeah.
Then we'll move on to item 11B, Discussion of Budget Process. Commissioner LaPointe?
Finance Director Bott?
Well, we have an internal process, and the Sheriff mentioned that we start the process early May. We provide the Departments and the elected officials with the calendar. We open up on the AS400 their requests for 2020. So generally, for the first two months, they're entering their requests into the budget. We handle the personnel side of the budget. We build in some cost of living adjustment. We try to estimate what the health insurance and the benefit costs are going to be. That does take about two months. As you recall, we recently discussed with you what we were going to do with wages and benefits. So there's some tweaking that's always involved, but the personnel budget is built based on the current staffing plan. So it does take about three months to build a budget once the Departments make their requests. We're also looking over that course of time to, I, I look at their revenues that they would enter. I don't always agree with their revenue amounts. I'm working with the Treasury and Equalization to estimate what our tax revenue is going to be. And that's, that's a little tricky because we don't know really what that tax revenue is going to be until you accept the Equalization Report next April, so you have to be conservative. Long story short, we have worked through most of that process with the Departments and the elected officials. We're down to the end where we want to meet with several of the larger budgets. We're down to the end where we wanna meet with several of the larger budgets. I believe the administrator has, uh, decided or determined who he wants to meet with. We're not going to meet with everyone. We used to do that. Uh, we have built basically a status quo budget for twenty twenty. Uh, having said that though, we did have ten point four FTE position requests. You may ask, how do you get a point four? Well, some, some departments ask for, uh, an increase in an FTE that may not, may not be a full FTE. But long story short, we did have a little over ten, uh, requests for new positions in the budget.
Typical?
That, that's typical, actually maybe a little light. Uh, we don't build those, uh, position requests into the budget until we've had a chance to review how we might. Well, obviously we wanna talk to the departments about that, but how, how do you fund those requests? It's just, you know, that's the biggest thing. I mean, are they, uh, valid requests and then how would we pay for it? We also had, uh, twelve point five, uh, requests for reclassifications of current positions in the staffing plan. So at this point, we have, uh, the departments have done, uh, their part for the most part submitting their requests. I have been able to balance the budgets, uh, which I like to have that done before I hand it over to the administrator. Uh, we could go in and make some line item adjustments yet at this point, uh, have not really done that. So I think where we're at is, uh, we wanna meet with probably three or four of the larger departments so that we understand their requests. So that we can talk to them about their position requests. And then once we've done that, we'll finalize, uh, the budget. We'll summarize the information for you, uh, so that it's, uh, a little more manageable. But we do have the detail too, that, that's always available. If you wanna look at, uh, you know, a fund like the general fund, which has quite a few departments. Or the Health Department, which could have thirty plus departments. So there's a lot of detail. But we're, I, I'm where I wanna be with it at this point in time and I think, like, I don't know if the county administrator is where he wants to be with it at this point. But we're, we're, we're finishing up the process before we hand anything over to you at this point, so.
I know, it always comes up, the, uh, correction officers are always under, they put in a forecast and you, of head count. And you do the math in terms of the wages, et cetera, et cetera, then he always is understaffed. Is that the only, is that the only department that is typically that way and that would show a favorable variance in terms of their budget and?
In, in general, and I really focus on our general fund, which is the thirty, thirty-nine million dollar, uh, budget. That's the largest budget. There were no requests for corrections officers this year, which is somewhat unusual. There were requests for, uh, personnel in the sheriff's office. But yes, going back to that specific question, historically, uh, we have not been at full staffing in the jail or the corrections. But that's true, uh, we, we budget for full staffing in all of the funds that have personnel. But we usually, uh, spend anywhere from two and a half to one and a half percent less than that full staffing because we're never at full staff. And when you have a, uh, change or somebody leaves and the time that it takes to fill. So that, that's kind of a savings, uh, or a conservative amount that's built into your budget. You budget for all your employees, all of your FTEs. And over the course of the year, any place or any department where you're not at full staffing for the full year means you have a budget savings. We, we've had historically for, I don't wanna say forever, but we, we hardly ever have full staffing in the corrections in, in the jail. And there's usually a, a good amount of their budget balances. The sheriff mentioned today, uh, he, he's currently at twenty-nine. And that staffing plan is approved at thirty-four FTE, so you, you are accumulating some savings in your general fund budget. However, we have higher overtime costs there because of the, the fact that he doesn't have the flexibility to schedule based on thirty-four, uh, corrections officers.
Thirty, thirty-one, wasn't it Dean?
Yeah, he, so that's the sheriff's math. Uh, he counts, yeah, he counts two different numbers. He counts on the schedule and he counts.
I think the approved staffing plan is thirty-four though.
It is, but he-
That's, that's how I build the budget. I, based on the staffing plan that's been approved and any changes that this board. The only, the only board, the only body that can make changes to that is, is the County Board of Commissioners.
Is thirty, we're getting back, is thirty-four the total head count in the jail?
No. Thirty, thirty-four corrections officers.
Corrections officers, and then you've got, what's, what's in addition to, what's, what's the?
Seven sergeants, a lieutenant, a captain, and I think, uh, three.
The sergeants are correction officers. They're on the floor doing, I mean, I've seen Paul Scott over there and, so the thirty, thirty-two or thirty-four number is.
Yeah, that's not the full staffing. You have the other positions that are, that are built into the jail, the overall budget. You can have times when we're not at full staffing for the, for the sergeants or this year, one of the clerical people left. And the time it takes to fill those positions, you're accumulating some unexpendable personnel costs.
Hearing the number, or saw it something like forty-five or forty-eight or something like that in the jail and then I was surprised when you kept hearing this thirty-two number, so.
Thirty-four corrections officers is what he's referring to.
Well, now that, that's a little misleading. A sergeant is a correction officer. I mean, they're, anyway, I'm getting off topic, but. Sometimes this is confusing.
So the departments at the man-
It's the sergeant, it's the sheriff's man?
Well, it is, it's a, it's a complicated process. We have at times over five hundred employees in Grand Terrors County. And Dean has a budget balanced just over forty million dollars for present, presentation to this board.
Of what's been submitted so far, any, any significant requests for increase or decrease over the previous year's, uh, requested budget?
There were some line items in the general fund. One of the places where we, I think we fell a little bit behind on was replacing our computer desktops and software that's on the computers. So, uh, working with IT to manage that, I mean, to, to replace everything that's, that needs to be replaced is, is a cost that I can't absorb in the funds that receive those costs. We do have a fund balance there that we could use, but, you know, we look at how those rates, uh, impact other places like the Health Department or where we have grant recovery. Yeah, so we have, we have some work to do. Uh, and, and when you look back, it seems like in fifteen and sixteen, we just, there, there were some deferred items that, you know, we're, we're kinda having to deal with now. So what we'll generally do is see if we can do some of that work yet this year and probably defer some of it out one more year. But yeah, I, I'm, I'm comfortable.
Now, there's a separate capital plan, right? Now, when you say we need a bunch of new computers, does that fall into the capital plan? I mean, we'll see it.
No, you're, what, what we've done there, Commissioner LaPointe, is when you look at the cost of a, a laptop or a computer and the software that's on it. Some of the accounting principles, the, the gasby comes into play. If that unit is less than five thousand dollars, we just charge that back to the department in their IT line item.
It's expensive.
Yeah. It, it's just-
Is five thousand a cutout, is that in the county as a whole?
Yes, yes.
So what's the capital? What have you seen so far in terms of capital?
Still working with Joe on that and I think some of the, what, the audit or the review.
Yeah.
We, that, that's one area where we really need to determine what we wanna focus on. I mean, I have the funds allocated there, but I can't tell you at this point in time what projects would be recommended for approval.
I think, uh, we probably see some more technology budget for this year because Windows seven is at end of life. So at the end of this year, anything Windows seven is no longer supported by Microsoft. So if there's vulnerabilities that come out, um, they won't be patched. So basically it's.
You can get a deal on Windows eight.
Yeah. Well, Windows ten's a free upgrade, but the hardware has to be able to run it. So, I'm being facetious.
So since the managers, in the managers' meetings earlier in the year, we have been very consistent with our messaging, saying that we want a current services budget. And positions would not be recommended unless those positions carried with it revenue supporting the position or a demonstration of a significant need for a position. That said, uh, there was just shy of a million dollars in positions requested. Um, Dean mentioned the reclasses. There's, uh, roughly sixty thousand dollars in reclasses. So in addition to cars, boats and things that go. So we are, um, currently reviewing that. We will not, um, we have to talk to a couple of the, of the, uh, elected officials and department heads about their budget. And we should have that to you, um, by mid October.
Should we look?
Yeah, I know that, you know, it's probably just me, but one of the problems that I always have with the budget and, is that whole MERS thing, you know? And I understand that it's all charged back to each of the individual departments that have personnel that are getting it. Is there any way that we can extract out of that, if you will, something that tells us exactly where we're at? Because the, the problem with charging the MERS charges back to each of the individual departments and charging them to each individual per, place where we have personnel is the fact that we get completely erroneous numbers for things like how much does it cost to operate the jail for a day? Because we're, we're charging a whole bunch of MERS costs back to that department, you know? And, and I, I understand why we do it. I don't, I don't like it, but I understand it in that sometimes we have opportunity to recover some of those, those indirect costs and grants and different types of things. But, you know, as we, as we view the, view the pension debt, if we had a way to extract some of that and then show how we're, how we're addressing it. It would be a lot easier to see that when it's mixed over, you know, a three inch thick mo, don't look full of departments.
I'll just say regarding the budget process, as a commissioner, I get, one of the concerns is, are we doing our job? Are we representing the public's best interests? Uh, and, you know, department heads are obviously, you know, representing their department to the best they can. But what, you know, what concerns me, if you see, you know, we have these openings that are unfilled and at the end of year, we got this big budget and we want a new truck. Well, did that position go unfilled because you wanted a new truck? You know, are we not providing the services to the level that we could because of some hidden agenda? And, uh, you know, it's, it's a natural distrust, you know, trust but verify, you know, question. We wanna make sure we're doing a good job. I think that's what's behind a lot of our questions and concerns about the procedure. Because we come into this, there's, I mean, we have a, we have a commissioner training we go to, but it really doesn't touch on budget process. You know, we don't know what standard budget process is. We can ask other counties how they do it. So just, uh, I guess any, uh, anything you can give us as a heads up for the process, what to expect, especially with new commissioners, is, is helpful for building that trust.
Uh, in large part, we're gonna submit to you a balanced budget, um, either on the ninth of October or shortly thereafter. And, uh, we would look for guidance from you. Do you wanna have the people that were, you know, denied or not recommended? Do you wanna see them? What, what is the commissioner's desire? We've had it, we've done it in a various, or different ways in the past. They've come to you. They have stated their case. They've made presentations to the board asking for reconsideration, uh, over and above what the administration has recommended. And we've had it where they haven't done that. So I would look to you as my guest that you would want to hear from those department heads and elected officials at a budget hearing or sometime before a budget hearing, so you could hear their rationale for the request and we would say why we rejected it or did not recommend it.
I would like to have opportunity to see the recommended budget before I go through the other. Because, you know, otherwise you get all of the wish lists in the world, you know, and, you know, we, I've sat here long enough to have went through the years where we've met with every single department. And we heard about, you know, how their, you know, their, their desk had a caster that would have broken and, you know, I, I don't wanna get into all of that, you know? I, well, first thing I wanna do is I wanna see the recommended budget and have opportunity to review that. And then if there's questions or then if we wanna call in, you know, the, the sheriff or whatever department and say, okay, look, you requested three additional people. Tell me why you should have those. You know, once we've seen the recommended budget and we've evaluated if in fact we have any additional monies available. Or we may wanna move monies.
Any other comments?
I think we hear every time and why the sheriff needs people every time we see him.
We've been following the bouncing ball on this since May and I, I think we're fairly comfortable with where we're at. We just wanna have a conversation with a couple of the department heads and elected officials before the ninth, which we are anticipating having the budget, uh, presented to the board for their first review. If you have questions about anything that we're talking, doing now in terms of preparation, I would encourage you to come, uh, ask about specific items. Or if you wanna just have a general overview, we can give that to you as well. It is unlikely that we will recommend many, if any, new positions that don't carry with it revenue.
Okay. Ready to move on? Okay, we'll move on to second public comment. Would you like to address the board? Bruce?
Okay, we're good. All right, we're on Commissioner Department Reports. Uh, I'll say the, the District Courthouse Committee met yesterday morning.
You mean the Mold and Bats Committee?
The Mold and Bats, Bats and the Belfry Committee. Commissioner Caffey was there, Commissioner Klaus, myself and District Court Staff and our administration and.
Facilities.
Facilities. Joe was there. Um, had, had a, a great start, but I think what I've discovered is this is gonna take some time. There's a lot to work through. A lot of concerns staff has, uh, brought forward and a lot of things, I think for the most part are being addressed. And we just need to go through and verify that we're addressing them and, um, move forward, uh, with that. Anyone add to that or?
No, I think it's, I appreciate that the committee was established and that it is structured the way it is with, with members, not only of the supervisory team over at the courts, but also just general staff. Um, and yeah, it's an important discussion and I feel good about the way it was yesterday.
That reminds me, we should report to the board that we, Carol, uh, Stacking stepped down from that committee and we put, help me with the name.
Is it Gwen?
Gwen.
Gwen Taylor.
Gwen Taylor.
Gwen Taylor, who's not a supervisor.
Right.
In her place is a voting member of that committee.
And that was the employee's request to just feel like there was representation from various levels.
They had requested that Carol brought that to the committee and we agreed. So Carol still will attend, but she will be a, a voting member of the committee, so. And we did make one recommendation to staff officially. I mean, there was several discussed, but the one official was to check on our, uh, cleaning service to verify, uh, that what is expected of them and that, make sure we're getting what we're paying for. So staff's on top of that. Any other Commissioner Department Reports?
I will be attending the, I'm really happy to hear that the Complete Count Committee has been established and launched and the first meeting is next week.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, isn't it?
Let me look at my calendar. I can't even keep track of the weeks these days. Uh, yes, the twenty-sixth. So that, that is, um, that is an important convening that, um, I, I think it's open, right? Just obviously if, if more commissioners are coming, let staff know. So if we hit a quorum, we can, although it's posted, right? So it's fine, okay. And as a city representative, I'm very sad to tell you that the Eighth Street, uh, completion is not on schedule due to all of that rain recently. So sorry, guys, we're gonna be driving around for just a little bit longer, but I think it's gonna be really great when it's done.
And then they're gonna close the other side.
Absolutely. It's just, Leland County's about to sue us for closing down for the Orient Man is what I'm hearing. Uh, anyway. And then, uh, yes, I, I was a part of the recently dissolved ad hoc committee on ethics and we know that's gonna come, come back at the next meeting. And HR is looking at it as well. Um, those are my, I think that's it for now, yeah.
I did wanna speak to, uh, an article that was in the paper this morning that I, I talked to our administrator about. Because just breezing through the paper, I'm gonna be on my way to get here at eight o'clock, it looked like five cases of Hep A at the Grand Terrors County Jail. But that's not what it said and he clarified for me. So anyone else who made that mistake, uh, we don't have any known cases in our jail. There was someone who had left our jail.
Correct, that is correct. There was an inmate that had tested positive for hepatitis A, had left the jail. And, uh, so the Health Department worked with, worked with us and the jail staff and anybody that wanted to have Hep A vaccines, we're allowed to do so. But there is nobody currently that we know of in our jail that has Hep A. But there is nobody currently that we know of in our jail that has Hep A. The other four were from surrounding areas.
Okay. All right. Any other Commissioner reports or notices?
Question about the Airport Ad-Hoc Governance Committee. Mr. Chairman, you and Mr. LaPointe are, are representatives. Do you have a sense of where, how soon we might be seeing something come to the full board?
Also Administrator Alger is a member of the committee.
Right, but as commissioners is what I meant, yes.
Um, no date has been set that I'm aware of. But I think it's one of those things that's going to happen a little at first and then all at once.
That's what I'm afraid of.
Yeah, I just, I, I think probably before maybe November, December.
Well, they've given us the milestones, the events that have got to happen.
Yeah.
Kind of spread them out, one per month. So they know the exact public comment here, there, and what boards have to approve it. And, no, I think the next thing is to put some dates on it so we can plan accordingly.
Yeah. I, I'd like to meet with you outside of this meeting and just have a discussion of your concerns.
Yep. Yep, I'm, I'm game for that.
All right. Commissioner Hunley?
I guess my, my comment on it is I would just like to call out the County Road Commission. I suspect the East-West Corridor, the ultimate, you know, recommendations and the way things go may not be the way that I would choose to do it. But I really do commend them for the, the process that they've gone through, the engagement that they've done. And I think that's kind of a model of what we should be doing. So with, with whatever we're going to do with the airport, I'd just like to encourage that kind of, like, not just kind of token reaching out, but like, they, they seem to have gone through a, a good process of making sure that people had the, everybody had the, the detail in advance, and, and it doesn't get thrown in one meeting that showed up, and it was kind of in the, so I, that's, I think it's an important thing. And I'd just like to make sure that it, even if it doesn't go my way, that it, it gets, you know, duly vetted and all that, so.
We have made progress in getting the Airport Commission to actually post their meeting times and the members, so that's progress.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. No need for closed session. No further business. We're adjourned.